Mission to order. The first item of business will be the pleasure of the leaders. Now the local starting, you Matt?
Uh, Matt Winstock.
Mike Layton.
Alan Songstad.
Mr. Davis.
Debbie Trinan.
Oh, there she is.
Here I am.
Okay, you're here.
I am here. Well, I'm not there, I'm here.
Okay, well, we have everybody's time. Um, we have any announcements? Nope. Okay, so first item of business is a consent agenda. Everybody have a chance to read the minutes? Any corrections, objections? There are no objections, uh, minutes are approved.
One thing before, excuse me. Maybe for the record, put today's date and time and everything in there.
Oh, yeah. Four thirty, March seventh. And we're meeting on the third floor, fifteen hundred highway two, Sandpoint. Uh, okay, so now we're at the workshop items, the first, uh, workshop item. We have two components, uh, public airport facilities and economic development. They're open to public discussion, although it's CD public here. So let's go first to public airport facilities, do we get a chance to have the airport manager? Take a look at it?
Yes, so we, we doubted the file of him and he replied with no comments.
Yeah, no comments, no comments, so apparently he likes what we did.
Okay, we can check that box.
We don't.
Okay, we have a record of that?
Yes, we do.
Uh, so is any further discussion on the, uh, public airport facilities? Okay, well then, is there a motion to move, uh, that public airport facilities component onto the public caring agenda?
It's, it's, it's continued from the last time.
Right, but.
It's already continued from the last time. The motion was made back.
Was made to pass it on?
Yeah.
How much for that one?
It's going to be around twenty plus march.
Again, we didn't change it.
Yeah.
Um, all right, so we'll do economic development, uh, any further comments on the economic development component?
As I've done quite a few times, there's, there's one thing I, I just happened to notice it the other day, I'm not gonna be able to find it now. But in there, and I know it was dated to one of the tables or charts or something. And it was copied data, I believe, but it said, uh, growth, the economic growth. And the way it was calculated, it, it showed a hundred and thirty-eight percent growth. But that's not growth, that's, it's a hundred and thirty-eight percent of the old number. So it's not growth, it's only thirty-eight percent growth. See if we can find it. Yeah, see if we can find it, yeah, I don't think I can see it even at the whole of the group over there. Well, maybe up on the screen, sure.
There you go.
Okay. See right there, it said a hundred and thirty-eight, grew by a hundred and thirty-eight percent. So we looked at the numbers, no, it was abruptly, like, I can't even figure where the thirty-eight came from, but. But I mean, that's, you know. As well as is the new number minus the old number divided by the old number, that's percent growth.
So you're saying then that the wage base grew by sixty-nine percent or a spawning like?
No, I don't think so. Take a look ahead and get, look at the numbers down below.
It's a hundred and sixty-nine. It, the next line underneath one thirty-eight percent.
Uh, okay, yeah, right, so it would be, it grew by.
Sixty-nine.
Well, even there, you know, overall employee, employment grew by thirty-eight percent over this period. And it just based, it's on for sixty-nine percent, right?
Well, in the version I have, it's called base.
Well, yeah, it's a big, it's a little, if you change text. Uh, but check that out, I mean, see if it, see.
What is, when is the heading?
Uh, chapter three, key economic sectors.
Yeah, there you go.
In that, in that graph right below it.
Yeah, that's why I just picked it, when I, when I read the text, I just, the, the, the graph came from Idaho Department of Labor.
Right.
And, and when I wrote the text, I just pulled the numbers out of the chart, I didn't really look at it very carefully.
That was something that I figured it from the, from the table above.
The table.
The graph is just a reflection of what's in the.
Yeah, and because the numbers are right there in that employment growth. There's the one thirty-eight, one six, so forth, but again, you know, those, those are. That's absolute.
I agree with Don.
Yeah, absolute number above.
Yeah, it should be.
I agree with them. Yeah, okay.
All, actually, it was gonna be.
I think all of them are in error.
Yes, they're all calculated the same.
Yeah, but, but the, the, the column on the far right versus percent of total, is that what it should be?
No, 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 that's, that's from each individual super sector, so for example, trade, transportation, utilities is nineteen percent of the total.
Oh, okay, okay, I got it. It's just percent growth is, is.
The new one minus the old one divided by the old.
Yep, so all the, those two columns need to be corrected and a few places in the text. Yeah.
All right, um, any other comments on this?
Now, even if, if, if the table below or the graph below, I think it also has the same law.
It does.
Yeah.
The, the, uh, the, uh, ordinance, EBSIS, uh, ordinance, the ordinance, uh, on the bottom, it says, all those are in the same. Same type of percentage, a hundred XX present, so.
Uh, which one are we doing?
Right there.
This graph.
Base growth, yeah.
Yeah.
So all those should be just. Cause that's wage growth, it should be the same numbers.
Yeah, once this, once the numbers in the stable change, I will go and recalculate all of this. Uh, and once that, those numbers change, they will be reflected in the graph below.
Right, because they're based on that.
It's up to you guys, I mean, this is kind of a small change, really.
It's clear, really.
So I, I don't see, it doesn't change the fact. So I think, I think we should go ahead and, and open this to hearing, but we need to, we need to just correct this.
Well, those lines would be a lot shorter than. Or change the.
Why you wouldn't, you'd go ten, twenty, thirty, forty, fifty percent. Cause none of them exceed fifty percent or seventy, you can go up to a hundred percent if you want. So that, and to be candid with you, this doesn't show me much, it just shows you.
Um.
It, it's, okay. How much it's grown since the previous two thousand one, ten, in ten years. But those numbers down below probably should just be reading ten, twenty, thirty, forty, fifty. Rather than fifty, a hundred and fifty.
Oh, yeah.
No, they're, they're gonna be changed when the column changes. They were built from the.
If, sorry, you know, the graph is, is built from the table.
Alright, so seems to me that we can just make these clerical changes and, and publish, uh. The revised one with the, with new numbers.
Or is it still right?
Still time to publish it.
So the audience, we can have a hearing, but this would be. If that was with Jenna for the. Which file is this?
Economic.
It's gonna be a new one.
Oh, okay, so AM six is already on the board, so you have.
Is, is there enough time for this to move?
As long as it's ready.
You have a motion to move this to, uh.
Hearing on April fourth. Sure, make that motion. So you have this economic development component on April fourth. The move is seconded, uh, to. Have, uh, the economic development component for that public hearing on April fourth. All in favor?
Alright.
Opposed? Alright, so, uh, now, now the only component we have, well, see, laptop for this meeting anyways, housing. And I know that Dawn's been working hard on this.
So yes, and thank you.
Everybody's been, everybody that commented.
Yes, thank you everyone for commenting on the fly with this, it's been helpful. I've tried to, so, just a little, yesterday I spent many hours putting in comments in the column, co- comment column. And at one point, the thing froze up on me and it said, if you, if you quit this file, you'll lose all the data you put in. And so guess what? I lost all the comments. Um, that's what I thought, I said, oh, you're kidding, right? So I tried it and sure enough.
Come on, so this, what I'm looking at here does not have the, the comments.
No, that's it, they all went away. And yours is still in there, but all the ones that I put in, in, there's one of yours, I think, is that mine?
If there are several people working on the same file simultaneously, it doesn't change, it doesn't say everyone's changes.
Yeah.
It, it can only save one file at a time.
Yeah, I, 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 uh, and I noticed that I, I got, I was in, in this. Same time Dawn was and I got out, cause I thought Dawn was making changes.
Well, I, I think it was about that time, it was, it was late afternoon. When I, I saw, I think you made a comment, somebody else did, and then all of a sudden it froze up on me and told me to pack my bags, go home.
So, uh, so. How do we get, uh, the comments, we can get those on here respond?
No, they're lost, I, they were all my, just.
I was, they were, they were there just before I. Also, there's, on the device, there's three versions of.
Yeah, that's it, I look at the version two, version one, or the one that says, I'm, I'm just, I was on the labels on my screen.
The one that I got from you.
Three is the one I worked on, as a Word document on my computer and then emailed it to Swati and she put it on the drive here, just, just.
So can you put it on these?
Yes, I did.
Okay. Go to the email.
No, it's the shared drive.
In the shared drive. Okay, our shared drive. Yeah, shared drive, mission documents.
Yep.
And. My, so housing is waiting a few minutes here, there it is, housing was one more, oh, it's right there.
File is gonna have the comments in it.
Let me say something. Send the complaint up there.
Yeah.
Quicker, quicker, there you go. Okay, and your components. Components?
Owns to the housing.
Um, maybe there's one of the other versions.
I tried that, uh.
I think I spoke on this.
Mics are in version two, I believe. Uh, pounds and, and days are in all their version. This one, uh, oh, sorry.
Oh, we can, we can pick it out, I think.
Yeah, but it might be helpful for whoever had the comment, they have it all kind of there. Version two comes out here, but.
Version two?
The goal you have here, um, is different than the goal to be out here. It is very similar, but it's sort of more.
Should be, yeah, so this might change that.
Yeah, the one, the one that's approved is provided environment that it aids. Instead of. It's, 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 it's part of accounting will, it says, provide an aid.
Okay, so there's one change, so we can change that, Swati? Okay, that's a question, so.
Um, okay, thank you.
If we could change things on the fly tonight, that'd be good. I still have gonna work to do. Okay, but it, it'll make the changes tonight that we can make now, it's gonna be hard, cause this is a Word document and we're doing it in track changes mode. And that's gonna be confusing, because if we change anything now and accept it, I don't know if you can just, I think, I think you can accept just a paragraph. Accept the change.
You can accept changes individually. It takes, you have to go through the whole document that way and make a decision on each one.
Yeah, and well, that's, I think our tonight's exercise, that means, you know, you can lock it up and I can go back and.
Forty, fifty. You know, what I was thinking is not making a code room, and I think you had a question some, in some of these, um, sections.
Right.
So whether or not we ought to include it or not, I think you can, you can answer that.
So my, so one thing, well, let's see, okay, so we, we took care of the goal, or we're gonna take care of the goal. Make it consistent with our already approved goals.
Well, I have another question on that goal thing, which is I didn't take the time to look at the other components, but. Why was there a goal in the introduction of this one and not in the other components, as I remember?
I, I decided on this, on this component, I would just update what was there, what was written. So this was, that's the way it was written back in two thousand fifteen.
Right, and I just thought that was weird that this one had that and none of the others did, did they, or have we gotten rid of them?
I, I think we haven't hit the ones that were done in thirteen or fifteen, this is the first one that was done.
Oh, okay, that makes sense, do you think that we need to be consistent across the board and just get rid of it, or if it has that, that verbiage?
I think that's it, well, yeah, this is interesting, because now we're at the first one, because one of the discussions we need to have is the format for. The comprehensive planning components. And, and the ones that were done in two thousand thirteen and fifteen are a totally different format than the previous ones in O two to O five.
Well, wouldn't it make sense at this point in time to make them all consistent?
Uh, as we're passing them on for approval, yes.
I, I don't think it's that necessary, I think. We can look and see what we, we need to do, but. I think the other.
Well, I guess, I guess my main point in my comment was, is, if there is going to be a thing that says housing component goal. It needs to be the same verbiage that's in our goal.
Well, true, and, and that's what I attempted to do, but missed it, so I found that today and.
Okay. That's the reason.
All the other, another way to look at this formatting question, or it's on all the other, oh, it's at least the two I did, and I think all the other ones. We just started from a clean sheet of paper.
Right.
I didn't look at the old format at all, I just wrote what I thought should be written, formatted, so that it looked reasonable. Swati made some changes to the formatting, it was fine, it looks good. Uh, I'm, I'm not, I'm not, I don't think we necessarily need to stay with the same format. And if, if there's some reason to do that, that's fine, but.
But maybe a little discussion there, because the. The comp plan that was totaled up and, and passed or accepted in two thousand five. Was a compilation of stuff that was done in O two, O three, O four, and O five. So it had, they were all consistent in the format. Two thousand thirteen, two components were updated, and this new format, which, oh, looks like this.
Yeah.
Was put in, and, and these are all called chapter this, housing component, it's actually, so, and then. Because it's called chapter twelve, within the document, there's no further chapters, you don't have chapters of a chapter. It was that kind of stuff, and just the overall format and the pictures and what the, the print upon and everything, the tables. It's quite different, but I think that, and since, it looks like it's gonna be done. Relatively within a year's time, all the components, and they should be consistent, I agree. It should be consistent, and this is a good format, I don't know whether it was done in. I don't think that's a, this particular page and stuff, that's not a Word page, I think that came from publisher or something. I guess.
I, I assumed that we were.
That's a Word page.
Is it, with all that fancy stuff on it?
Yeah.
But all the components had a couple of people. No, they, yeah, they did.
Some of them do, some of them don't.
No, property rights like I had them in population, yeah, so all the property rights was done in two thousand thirteen.
Can, all the new, newer ones had this kind of a cover, but.
O two, O three, and O five, no. Isn't there a section?
Yes, in front of this, or somewhere.
It's for the implementation.
Right, he's called this, so, you know, they're there, are these the same?
They, they need to be.
Yes, they need to be, obviously.
And it wasn't only one, is my other question.
Well, yes, there was only one goal.
In this particular case.
Yep.
Uh, and other, there are others, there you have multiples.
Right.
Which then makes it a little, not so clean.
More cumbersome to, yeah, to clean up, right.
Don, I have a question, were you on that introduction where it says how the component goal? Um, what was there prior, actually came right from, it was a language right from.
That's on the front page.
Okay, so it is, there's sixty-five, O eight, I.
Yeah, and all. And yeah, that's, that's, I, I, I don't know, any, anytime, in my opinion, anytime we can rear what Rupa says. Better, I mean, you know, there it is, and this was another part of the format, every component had the, the. Loop of requirement right on the face of it.
Yeah.
So that was the starting point, and then you go through and do all the fancy stuff and whatever, and, you know, started, started analyzing and putting data down and.
Well. See, that's, so, right, we, we can do that.
Right, I mean, these could be, I think.
County wants to do that, they can do it, but.
Well, I.
We don't have the tools to do that.
Um, right. But I mean, this could be done. What I'm, we can have a cover sheet like this with the. Yeah, and, and at some point. What you call it? Publishing the comprehensive plan. That's where all the cleanup and, and, and formatting and all that stuff can take place. So.
Well, so if we're, if we're concerned about.
Gonna go through this?
Yeah, we're concerned about, uh. Consistency, we could, we can eliminate this housing component goal. We just eliminate. I just start with the next paragraph.
In general, I'm, I'm in favor, particularly for the things like the goals and the objectives and policies, which are. That's the cr- crux of what the plan is, I'm in gen, I'm in favor of only writing them in one place. And that way, if they ever happen to change for some reason, you don't end up in a situation where you forgot it's somewhere else, and now you have a conflict. And it's, so it, to me, they should be in the implementation section only.
Yeah, we, we.
I agree.
You know, especially.
I agree.
Because we were, you know, there wasn't, remember we had a discussion about whether we should put the goals and objectives and policies?
Yeah, he's right.
And we decided not to, not to.
Right, right.
So let's, let's take the component goal out.
Yeah, and that's just a, a standalone statement anyway.
Um, I think if, if, you know, if this, when this gets around to being published, I, I think it would be great to have a cover sheet like that. With some graphics like this, and, and then the group.
Yeah.
Exactly, some context.
Sure, and it's easy to find this book, it's here. Just standalone chapters within the document, but.
Okay, let's, uh, let's go through the, let's go through it. Um.
First paragraph?
Well, we got a comment on first paragraph.
Yeah, uh, again, la- latest information in this document is two thousand ten.
Well, something's wrong.
Maybe down below, you've corrected a lot of, there, there's been a lot of new stuff, but. I mean, that's thirteen years old, so I don't know your. Yeah, can I, I, I guess, first paragraph.
I can't, I can't, blind, I can't see the stuff that I had.
And there is a new census too, of.
Oh, yeah, we're, you know, well.
Okay, let me, let me stop and. Swati and I have, have used the twenty twenty census and the, the later, uh, American survey, community survey. To update the numbers, and I'm, I thought for sure that I updated that paragraph, cause it's got old information. Anytime there was any old reference, I updated it to the new, well, there's something happening.
I made my comment, so we've got plenty of time to correct, if they don't, maybe.
I, I think it's. Document that's losing actually. Other than that, I, in my opinion, I think first.
No, there isn't.
Is this, this is the one that.
That's the one I'm looking at.
Okay, alright, so, so obviously that first paragraph, yeah, the numbers need to be updated, that's weird.
Okay.
And my original format, because I was working with the, uh. The document in the, in the shared drive. I did import it to my computer and make it a Word document, so I was using the formatting and, and text changes ability in that. Whatever it's called. Going online. So I, I didn't use track changes, there is no such track changes in that type of document. That's only a word, therefore, my format was red type is new. I still use the cross out to strike out, or taking out old. But as you see there, the, the, that second paragraph is, there's strikeout, the third paragraph is all in red.
So on the second paragraph in the last sentence. It says, this component will also review. So does a component review, or how, how do you intend that review of the housing issues facing Bonner County? I mean, the component doesn't do anything. Should it be? Wow. For this component, what maybe does review, uh, housing issues?
I think it does.
Okay. Now, that, alright, okay, now, this component will also review housing issues facing Bonner County, set goals and objectives and establish action plans. That isn't in the component, or is it? Because it's, it's a true sign.
Yeah.
It's over in the implementation.
Right, there, there could be. Uh, this, this, this component will also review housing issues facing Bonner County, period.
Period.
Um, goals, objectives, and, and action plans are, are written up or whatever.
Well, you could say something like. You could say review housing issues facing Bonner County as a foundation for. Setting goals, which we've done elsewhere.
Well, that's it, based upon housing data. See, it already says based upon the housing data, um.
Yeah, and you.
Found in the implementation component of this plan.
So after Bonner County, you just say based upon the housing?
Yeah.
Um. Data, no.
Housing issues based upon the housing data.
No, the component will also review housing issues facing Bonner County, based upon housing data.
That's, that's like double positive.
Well, okay, put a period after Bonner County there.
Yeah.
I just was trying to keep.
In any of your sense, just.
Well, I mean, you could make two sentences there, yeah, in Bonner County, period. Um, goals, objectives. Are how, established, the action plans are based upon the housing data are in the.
Are established, or, yeah, for that, take out established. Oops. Policies and.
Are established?
Well, action plans are on the side of that. Action plan should be on the other side.
We didn't, don't need to establish on cities.
Yeah, they're not established, I mean.
So policies on. In action plan, are, are in action plans, based upon the housing data, are now. Is, are embodied in the implementation component, you know, this plan. Are in the nation plan.
Are stated.
And are based on the housing data.
Yeah, based on the housing data are, are stated or bound, whatever, in the implementation component. Alright, goals, objectives, policies, and action plans are. Plans, comma, based on the housing data.
We don't really have action plans.
No, they, they, that was one thing that could have been put in, but again, this was the language in two thousand fifteen, I didn't.
Goals, objectives, and poli, and policies, take out and action. Got that, that section.
Are.
No, just take out the R two.
Yeah.
Go, goals, objectives, and policies based on the housing data are contained in the.
Yes. Contained in the implementation component, yes. Of this plan.
Okay. How about the next?
So, let's see, so that's just a, a, a group of information. It refers back to the fifteen. Right up.
I'm making the point that. You need to look at housing and land stock in order to. Oh, land stock in order to. To, I think that's where I'm doing it.
You, you believe in your.
Twenty fifteen plan wasn't adopted. It was simply a draft, but it never got adopted.
There, there was actually, when you look at those comprehensive, one, one said, one was like from March. And I think that said draft, and then something was adopted in July.
Yeah. I've always been confused about why one is drafted, because they're all, they're almost identical. And yet. The one that's, this one here, it says right on the face of it.
Is that the one from July?
July sixteen.
Yeah.
July sixth.
So.
Two thousand fifteen.
But it was two, so two thousand fifteen, so it's.
Yes, exactly.
And the draft was dated March, March twenty thirteen.
Okay, that's why.
I think the.
Do we have a resolution that's there?
I don't think so. I think what was adopted and uh.
Okay.
The latest official component is still from. Way early. Thousands.
Oh, it's two thousand two?
Yeah.
Yeah, it was the original housing. So that's kind of.
Two thousand fifteen was an attempt to, to update the plan, the housing component, but it never got adopted.
Oh, that's so exciting.
I mean, it just says the date on it, doesn't say by resolution or anything, it's just. It's just, it doesn't call it draft either.
Which is pretty official.
At all.
As a stamp.
And it has a different date than, than the other, the previous one is called draft. Weird.
Yeah, let's, let's check. I mean, okay. Regardless of the fact. The document is there. And I use it as the template to update it, so. Let's go from there. Um. Maybe that'll solve a few things.
Okay.
That's something I believe.
Thousand two is the adopted.
Oh, goodness. That's not on, on line.
That's not on.
No, the only thing that's online is this.
Yeah.
Well, why don't we just say rather than adopted, we'll just say it. Like fifteen comprehensive plan.
Proposed.
Or whatever. Yeah. What page are we on?
Okay. Yeah, it's on page.
I guess so, well, it's online, so.
Yeah. Yes, it wasn't adopted. How do you, any of these plan? Proposed in two thousand fifteen? Dated.
Well, but. Wasn't adopted, it wasn't.
No.
Why don't we just say? Why don't we just underline this? Are you pretty sure it's probably that wasn't adopted?
Yeah.
Interesting. That explains why.
You can yell a letter.
That's just to get on the screen.
Proposed or.
Okay. Proposed, yeah. I think component. Proposed update in two thousand fifteen extensively detailed are. As in applying or related.
Okay, so this is where I was making the argument. It's a good idea to compare against the county uh, on a number of fronts. The total count. Which obviously include the cities rather than just. The last sentence, it's only applicable. To the pertinent elected official jurisdiction, so.
I agree.
So. So housing over here, the next section here?
Yep.
Um, are we going to be able to get? Data to fill in these?
Yeah, that was my question. We've got. The total number of parcels, yes, we've got that. Uh, I'm not sure it's broken down. By the cities. Well. On another front, I'd just like to remove the.
I can do it?
Yeah. The last column. Lots in the pipeline.
What does that mean anyway? I'm not sure with that.
Well, I know it's kind of weird today because it was different yesterday.
Well, this thing's gonna have a date on it, so, no, I could say, you could put down. Um. It's an explanation.
Well, it says twenty. It says at the bottom what the date is, which is right at twenty twenty-three.
Yep.
But I mean.
Oh. I'm not even.
Well, any of this is, anything, you know, you can look at, well, that's on a date. So let me ask you it this way, why do you feel that last column is important to have in this document?
Uh, an indication? I mean, the whole thing is. This part here is emphasizing what's out there. How many lots are there? How many houses are there? How many are occupied? How many are owning? All this kind of stuff. That's what the document. So to find out that there's seventeen hundred. Of potential new lots or lots or houses online, already in the approval process at Sandpoint, that's huge.
In Sandpoint or?
Well, that's what it says. Sandpoint, the six hundred and twenty-six and Bonderay.
So could I ask again, what, what is in the pipeline mean?
Well, just talking about.
Right, um, be a remodel. What have I got down below is the, the double asterisk? That's just information about a various cities. It means, talking with them. Either something that has gone through the permanent process and is pending, hasn't been built yet. Or is even in the process to be heard in May or April or something, so you know, this.
Does that mean that somebody has submitted an application?
Yes.
The way, the way to say it?
Yeah.
And, and to, Mike whispered something here, is, have we?
It's for.
Have we, have we, are we sure that we're not including things like remodels? So are those all new homes? Are those all homes and shops and barns and?
Yes. Yeah, right, no, they, as far as.
I didn't even try to do that.
Exactly. So here's what, here's what the planner at video ponderate. Gave me, you know, as a, as a reference to use it, so. Any one of the housing developments that are listed on there in the highlights and so forth, I told those up. Because she said, these are all in the process of approval. These are not wishes, they're not fictitious, they're. They're going to happen.
Okay, and it identifies which ones are housing and which ones are businesses.
Yes.
If someone, is there some, it looks like some of this is already there. Is, is it, are these? Are we, remodels, but. It's re redevelopment?
Right, for instance, that one, there's two lots in that one subdivision on the east side of two hundred. And they're re dividing that to put up, uh, that multi-housing that's shown there.
Hmm.
Well, I guess the other thing I would say is. Uh. It's got information, but it's a snapshot in the moment of time. In five years from now, when someone's reading this.
But the whole table is a snapshot. Cell on that table is a snapshot in time.
And all the way through the tables, all the way through here. Six hundred and twenty-six, how many of those are lots and how many of those are houses?
Well, it says lots, houses, houses.
It doesn't really matter, it just, it could even yield a house. They're residential. It's a lot.
That might even be nation, or is it, is it? Is it a lot or is it a house?
Uh. Those would probably be lots.
Well, a lot of the ones. How many family? One of the ones. Developments, obviously, that were eighty units, six hundred and twenty units, so maybe. Or accurate to say houses in pipeline or residential units in the pipeline?
Yes, because that's what we're really interested in.
Yeah, yeah, well. The lot count, as you'll see as we go through this, the parcel count is also important.
But you got, you got here, though, you've got a column that says vacant residential lots or parcels. You've got that for the county, but you don't have it for the others. So it seems to me that that's where the lots come in. And over here. We're talking about the last column residential units, not even necessarily thousands. Residential units.
Exactly. Yeah. I think, I mean, even on what ponderate gave me, it is explained, I just told them all up, either it's a lot or. Or housing units, like combined.
So my, we should have, my suggestion would be. It, it's important to understand the difference.
Yeah.
So I think having a, if you want to have a column that talks about new residential lots that are in the process of being created, that's good information to have. And then a second column, which would be new residential units that were in the process of being, they're in the process, whatever. Whatever we're gonna call it.
And again, this, this table was made in that other, other processor.
And do it with Word now. And, um. Some of those in there were. Looked like they might be. More rental units. Like ponderation. So are we gonna distinguish?
At this point.
This movie just handles down to, this column residential.
They're, they're residences, that's what this is all about, it's how, even if it's for rent, I mean.
I don't know if we're getting to the point where we want to distinguish between the part of the market that's interested in. Well, that's versus.
It's, the document does get into that to an extent. Because it makes a distinction. With the affordable component part, affordable is usually rent. Or often most, so those numbers are, are shown. And the status is shown for the various cities and then for the county. Um, but I just didn't, I didn't have all of the data to fill in the cells.
So again, it's really unincorporated, Bonner County.
Yeah.
Um. Now residential units in pipeline, there.
Not yet.
Uh. Obviously, we can get that.
Well, yeah, he's told us empty, I'm searching for the days.
How, how would you determine?
Well, it's gonna be a good one. Um, in the pipeline is. Uh, um. MLDs that are applied for and building location permits for residences.
I, I think the residence would be more accurate because. You know, all those MLDs. Raise my hand in front of the whole public here. And I created, I don't know. But thirty, forty parcels, I have no intention of having any doing anything over twenty years.
Yes, but it'll discuss later on. Okay, it's up to the owner whether or not these are on the market. They're there, so it's a raw number that says, here's the number, because people have told us over and over, there's no more.
No more. No more.
Well, that's what they say. Uh, now stick in some words and qualifiers in that sense. There's no more available land for sale in Bonner County.
Okay, there you go.
And ultimately, all this is gonna be subject to market forces.
Oh, yeah, absolutely, absolutely. That's where I'm going with this whole discussion. My, my question I have, on, on the first column, total number of parcels that could have housing. And it's twenty-eight thousand one sixty. And then, uh, fourth column, total vacant residential lots parcels, eight thousand one ninety-eight. Um. Hey, can you explain that, what that means? I mean, I would.
It's the difference between twenty-eight one sixty and nineteen ninety-two.
And eleven.
It's, it's the, it's the.
It's the vacant lands.
It's, yeah, parcels that.
Want to say you have no intention of selling. So, so that right there. Is a number we don't need to come up with. Our lots in the pipeline because that is it right there.
Yeah. Yeah, those things need, those, those numbers need to be. residential lots. So. Okay, so we're gonna go through this column like. Cause I don't, total number of parcels that could have housing, does that mean they're permitted for houses?
Based on their zoning?
Well. We're out there about a house. What I used for that was, we took, if you go to the assessor's page on the county website, this thing that says data files. And you pull that up and it lists every parcel in the county, cap city and unincorporated. But that needs to be filtered because not every one of those parcels is capable of having a household.
Correct.
So we filtered out the ones as best we could. That just know they're not gonna have. But even like.
How would you, how would you? Limiting lots?
Uh, okay. Bring one up here and show you.
I mean, one I would assume. Lots in industrial or commercial zones, we can say, don't, aren't gonna get a house on.
There, uh, this is, which was, this is. So what's funny is, we started with the assessor's sheet, all the data, every parcel. And then she did a GIS wonder and applied the zones, our zoning districts on top of that for each category. Each zone category, zoning district, and then brought in. The land use categories that the assessor uses for taxation. So there they are on the left. And. It, it merged. So every, every one of those on the left, all those assessments categories. As it's indicating. Uh, whether or not they could have housing or have housing or their vacancy, like right there. Five twelve, land, residential, rural tract vacant. Eight hundred sixty-seven parcels in the county under that zone, under R five zone. So then there's others, now I, I discounted all the ones that's commercial. Commercial improvement on category sixteen, no, there's not gonna be a house on. Uh.
So the only thing I spin is, that's, that's only is commercial?
It's commercial, industrial, uh, I, I, I still put, see that one, that one ten? Land Ag Timber HS is house site. Bacon. Twenty-three of those, that's, that's therefore possible. Ag Timber with residential improvement. Ag Timber with non-residential improvement, I didn't count those. Uh, land Ag Timber with commercial mixed improvements, no. So I further cherry picked the, the listing to come up with the number of parcels that could have housing. Right, and it was quite an exercise. So. I. You know, your, your introductory paragraph, uh, referencing table one. Shows existing housing stock and vacant residential lots. I think that's great, and that's all this chart needs to do, I, which I think is the second and third column. And all this other stuff, I think is, in my opinion, not, is not necessary. It's, it's information, but it's not really. Um. Anyway, I made the call.
Well, well, but the, so eventually, I think we'll end up having a discussion about. Where, where the third column is gonna be drawn. Yes, we're gonna probably wanna comment on an understanding of. How many homes are only seasonally occupied?
Right, and that's later in the document.
Correct.
The first, the first, the reason I put the first column in there. Every document the county's put out in the last twenty-five years, it says seven thousand six hundred fifty-three parcels of land in Bonner County. Yes, that's true, but it's not indicative of anything to do with housing. Of that, only twenty-eight thousand one hundred and sixty of those forty-seven thousand are. Absolutely capable of having a house. And that was astounding, you take out, see this, uh, I see what you mean. See, that's why, that's why I included it. It's been only in the case for what's available.
I think that, I think that what, the one column that needs to be eliminated is the lots in the pipeline. If that's.
Yeah, well, that was one that I just thought, okay, you know, what's coming? What's coming?
Yeah, but I mean, the lots are tighter, nine columns.
My, 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 my thought is, I mean, I, first of all, I'm, I'm astounded at the Sandpoint number.
Yeah, and seventeen hundred? Wow, yeah, I was too, and I got, uh, AV time.
And even with ponderate number, fundraiser is a pretty small town, when you get right down to the population.
Maybe seventeen.
So. If, if those numbers are accurate, I think that's very relevant.
I. And I hope they are.
I don't get, I don't worry, so to doubt the numbers, I have to say.
Yeah.
Incorporated county, my guess is that they'll, they'll either looking at the number of new lots that are in the process of being created. Or even the number of new. New, uh, residents, residences that are in the process of being created, that's gonna be tiny compared to twenty-eight thousand, nineteen thousand and eleven, those other big numbers.
And that's, that's part of the, part of the discovery of this, it's like, wow. Where are we putting our housing, our new housing?
Why are we leaving the cities?
Well, I mean, I mean. I, I, I would leave those columns in, I, I think what we need to do is they should, make sure we have a clear criteria for what we need.
Yeah.
Right?
Okay.
If it's a building, there's a, there's been an application for a. Building location permit that's been submitted or. What, I don't know what they can say. What, I don't know what they can send.
What's the difference between, well, vacant residential, that's a simple happy discussion, so. Vacant residential parcels, that's one column, and lots in the pipeline, uh. What what are, what are lots in the pipeline? I don't understand that.
It's it's. It's the, people who are property owners are in the process of creating new lots.
So.
Well, I don't think those are lots.
No.
So I don't know.
So for example, I guess, I just see that FundRA eventual, these two lots here. That's what I got, you guys see how long I got there? In sort of the video, one, beautiful house, and that's, yeah. They're just buying, really, that's why I might have been granted those hundreds and assumptions, and a division of those. Called, maybe, let's put in, uh, lots, and at the right now. There, there's two, I would go to housing, that is two that has to make it, so. Yeah.
Well, what I'd really like to do is see the real numbers. So, or, well, so then, seventeen hundred, how much of that is new residences being created, and how much of that is is new lots?
Well, that's why.
And then when they decide that most of that seventeen hundred moves over to the column to the left, new residential units of the pipeline. And there's a small number of new lots, and we may look at the totality of that column at the end of the day and say. It's a, it's a small number all the way up and down the column, and it's, based on that, it's not really relevant. But I think we need to understand how the seventeen hundred and the six twenty six break out between the far right column and the and the lots in the pipeline.
Uh, yeah, I I hear what you guys are trying to say, more information, I guess, is assumed to be better. Uh, but I would just say, if I'm coming. New to the community in, uh, twenty twenty six. I don't really care what's in pipeline in twenty twenty three.
You're gonna look at this.
Yeah, well. Let's just say I'm I'm that nerdy. Oops, maybe I have added something. The gist of this thing too is. All the data in here is to be used, analyzed, and boiled down to, so what goes to be said for the future.
Right.
So if we see this kind of activity now, one thing that I'm already concluding out of this is. The growth appears that it's gonna go in the states. If they've got the ability to provide services for seventeen hundred more homes. There's a lot doesn't sit around, well, there's there's only, I forget how many vacant lots there are in Sandpoint right now, it's it's not that many. Right, but there's properties, and then they also, they're also talking that this doesn't include the ACI. But they're like, Sandpoint is, that's that's part of what that last study did, is is people will attack that ACI and get it under your belt. So anyway, um.
I mean, one thing, the six twenty six, is that a curious, is that include, I wonder if that, does that include the Schweitzer employee housing? I don't know, that's. That place looks pretty big.
Uh.
Under eighty, oh yeah, is that? Yeah, yeah, yeah.
It didn't show up on their list.
Interesting, that's interesting, because it's. She just gave this to me two weeks ago, well, under construction.
So. Yeah, it's very transitional housing, many English. Forty eight units.
Wow.
Yeah.
Interesting.
It's a three, rebuilding complex in whatever, with your, no. Yeah.
All right, well, yes.
Okay, so, guess we'll be coming back, as we move on a little bit. Yeah, let's, let's keep going. I'll get some definitions and details. Uh, from the planners on those, and I still have, I put out the request to Brian Quayle and to, uh, uh. Anybody else, other planners, but I haven't received stuff back yet. Yeah.
Okay, so these numbers are probably gonna maybe move around a little bit, um. Bonner County housing occupancy.
So those came from the Census and American Community Survey, uh, that we pulled off the web. And they're all updated, and I've done. A lot of work to make sure that their numbers are consistent all the way through, pull out of the table, the text and so forth.
We have these numbers. Population. True.
Um, there's no population, the number is there, it's all units.
Housing units.
There's another table, there's another table further down.
Yeah, where, whereabouts, I'm not tracking, I guess. And what page are we on, or?
Um, we are on.
I'm at the.
Six of fifty one.
Six.
I'm. Six of fifty one on version three.
On version two. Okay.
Okay.
So the seasonal recreational occupation use, how did you determine that?
I didn't, census did. This all came out of where.
It's based on how people respond to the census.
Now. One thing I I thought I was gonna do was to see if I could compare the assessor's data for taxation with the census data for use. Uh, reported use, and I couldn't make a clean. Side by side comparison. It just don't seem to line up enough. So I abandoned that and just went with whatever, you know, and and its references came from the two thousand. Um. Uh, seventeen to. Well, whatever it says there.
Well, it says as of twenty twenty one, but then you got down here. Says US Census twenty twenty three, I don't think that's right.
Would have heard of. Well, yeah, okay, it was, it was the data from twenty one retrieved in twenty three, I guess, that's, so that needs to be changed. So we can.
Twenty twenty.
Yeah.
So so the strikeout numbers are what they, twenty ten?
Strike thousands.
Let's go back to the document, on page six.
On page, yeah. Bonner County housing occupancy. There's black numbers and red numbers there. Just wondering what, the the red numbers are the current numbers, what are the black numbers, two thousand ten?
They were probably just.
Yeah, it's two thousand thirteen. Okay, I just wonder if it was in thirteen. If it would. Give any significance as we have done in other charts, the percentage of growth here, true. The difference in those numbers? Well. I I don't know, I mean, percentages are, percentages are percentages, and if you, if you go, I've got ten people now, I've got twenty later, wow, it's a hundred percent increase. Oh, no, there's only twenty people, I mean, careful now, because we might throw out all the other charts percentages, that's the thing. Percentages don't tell you. Like, I, I. What was more important is the housing it, I mean, it'd be easy to do, I'm just curious, I would, but I don't know that it would help. Like I said, to me. What shows demand? And and wrote, uh, uh, the demand, what's the demand been in this period of time of ten years, or whatever it is? And so someone ten years from now can say, well, is our demand up or down? Yeah, and that 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 is dealt with in here too, so.
You know, I mean, I don't see, I don't see harm gone in. Between the two columns, you know, one twenty twenty one and one. Whatever that was, twenty twenty three. Then, you know. Showing their percentage of those. Or not, you know, you just have to show. We only built fifteen hundred homes.
I know.
Yeah, these.
Yeah, I, it just.
Didn't we have a year, a couple of years ago, on planning, it's already, we have like six hundred building location permits?
Well, true, but what were the long ones, I mean, oh, they added on to the shed, they, uh, they.
That's the issue with those other numbers.
See, and what, he gave, coming back, he gave us the real numbers. He said, here's the total number of building location prints, here's the one for new houses, it was a quarter of. Of the total number, because they're for everything. Yeah. Yeah.
So it was, the real number was a hundred fifty or two hundred or something?
Yeah, yeah.
Is that, do you think, the total number for a year, in a big year?
That should, sounds low, doesn't it?
It's really nuts, but the numbers of the numbers, and this is gonna refute the people who say, oh. And it's like, you know, like, I think I may have mentioned, I went to a. Home real estate class, and we had people from Canada, all this stuff there, and she needed to reference that. Uh, she checked with staff, we had over fourteen hundred building location permits. And I was gonna raise my hand and said, well, you better double check, because that's not all same kind of residents, those are garages, decks. And I remember, in the, just in the back of my mind, it was around forty percent guess. Of the numbers were actually, the only thing I get saved on is on page six, where you say. Subject multiple listing service data has a twenty twenty two, the estimated median home selling price is, you know, price. I wonder if we should put, because that terms us for single family dwellings, so the estimated median.
Single family.
Family dwelling. Single family, or single family, just to. Because someone else is gonna run that search, they're gonna run condos, the reason I didn't put condos in there, because all those numbers from Schweitzer in the seasons really skewed.
Oh, yeah.
Really messed things up, I think.
Okay, so there's need to be qualified as single family units.
Yeah, right.
So we got total, um. Housing units. There's this not very big. Increase. We go down here to owner occupied housing units. That is a dramatic increase. That's more like six thousand.
Um, but that's from twenty, but from two dollars, twenty to two thousand thirteen, off the, uh.
Okay. Because this, again, this was in a two thousand campaign report, so they were using, yeah, uh, recent numbers, but.
But that just shows, um, is that a trend of people?
Yeah.
Buying, owning property, using it seasonally, and then retiring and moving here?
Yes. Yes.
Yes, yes, thank you, you guys, all that, three of you.
Yeah.
The bookends here are the old folks, and the new guys are in the middle.
It's pretty, it's still a pretty remarkable number.
It is, but I can, I can testify to that in my neighborhood, and you probably can in yours too. There's a whole lot more people living down on Elliott Bay now. That that was their summer home, and they're claiming it as their permanent.
Yeah, that's maybe not irrelevant, except are a typical example, because there's only about two or three homes down there that are occupied here, right?
Yeah, but if they claim it is their permanent residence, that's the key.
Yeah, and I don't, I don't have a science assistability to that, but I know most of those homes are only occupied for a few months in a period.
Yeah, it's still, it it isn't a pure indication for sure. Because of that. Uh, they get to claim it as their permanent residence for tax and other purposes, and residency, but, um.
Now, there's one of those people that moves up to Schweitzer for the.
Right, so you must know, yeah, no, no, there, I'll do that.
Yeah, so again, you know, the census data, and that's why I was trying to buttonhole it by looking at the assessor's data. To see what the assessor said, and it it, I just couldn't. They don't match.
Yeah.
They clash. Okay, so, let's go on. Um. On, um. So. Can't read your. On that here, add your.
Interesting, the average house size is body by business, two point three nine.
Mm-hmm.
That's staying, that's true.
Yeah. Yeah.
It's hard to hire people.
Exactly, I was gonna say, that's indicative of that same trend.
Yeah.
Right, our age group.
Yep. For my age group, and again, this is only, this is only for two thousand thirteen, so.
Thinking here, just say, uh, these, these, these numbers are very interesting. And I I've tried to, again, relying on the census data that is quote accurate.
Uh-huh.
Um, again, I tried to compare it with the county's data that we have, which I think should be better used. Because it's absolutely local, and it's driven by a different set of criteria. Uh, so, but again, I could, I couldn't get a real good comparison of it. Okay. So in your text down here below this. Uh, your. Your, uh. Where.
Chart.
Uh, it it does point out the. Growth differences, up or down, which is good.
Yep.
I like that, and maybe that's all we need to have, and rather than try and make that chart all the way through, you know, just to keep your life simple, right? I can.
Well, and this, of course, is since, he started looking at the numbers, it didn't say twenty six percent up, three percent down, it's just the observation that I put it in text.
Yeah, yeah, uh, which is adequate, I saw, it's probably, probably adequate.
You know, that second paragraph, I don't mean to interrupt, no, I'm done, that second paragraph on that page seven.
That we can show here in the table itself. What what year of comparison would you like, from twenty twenty one to five years before?
No, I I I'm willing just to let that. Chart, that graph stand as is. And I don't think the board or the group here has made any consensus about. Whether that was to change, we're, we're just in general, was the discussion here, we're not.
Right, no, is this a workshop?
Not really.
We're workshopping it today.
All right.
So, uh, now, you you said that this. Median home value should be single family home?
Yes, single family, yes, yes.
Same family, yes.
Okay, but that is a no.
And then.
I'm gonna put that in there as well.
Yes, oh, and. The so, I have records.
Where are these?
We're gonna start to see.
Yeah, well, it sits down a ways. There, but. Oh.
Almost.
Where you go.
You give it a look at you?
So it's over.
It's got a dollar sign in it, so.
See it. It's not that far down. So it's six.
The seventh?
No, that's, that was all scratched out because.
There it is, okay.
So. Um.
Right, yeah, that last sentence, where it says, six hundred seventy five thousand for the three hundred twenty, oh, I thought just before that. So the estimated median. And it should say. Single family.
Single family home values.
Residents.
Yeah.
Single family home.
Yeah.
It was kind of interesting, and it's the selling price, not the value. Yeah, that's, that's actually the median sold sold price, twenty two.
Yeah, that's crazy.
Um. And then that, on page seven, that second paragraph, what's interesting. Is from nineteen eighty till. Twenty ten, you know, roughly half. Half the homes were owner occupied. But then. From twenty ten to twenty one, almost three quarters are owner occupied.
Yeah.
So when I hear people saying, all the buildings going crazy and everything else, like you said, you know, seventeen hundred homes, or whatever it was, within an X amount of span. What we're really seeing are a lot of those homes now being occupied, yes. There are not necessarily as many new homes as, we just got a difference, difference in the occupancy rate.
Yes.
And. Whatever those homes were before, I mean, they were summer homes, let's just say that in part launch.
Yeah.
Um, they were not on the rental market, most of them.
Right.
Now they're fully occupied. They're now a different status, and the thing that I found interesting, now, now, okay, we didn't have homeowners exemption numbers from ten years ago. We could probably get it, but that would reflect that. It would show at bedtime.
Mm-hmm.
Because if now they're claiming this is by permanent residents, then they should be applying for homeowners exemption, but they couldn't before.
Right.
But they didn't meet the residency requirement.
And and these numbers also show that now the three quarters occupied. The rent, the available rentals. I mean, the the available rentals have gone down, but the demand is still really high, because. Twenty five percent of those homes are occupied by the owners to being used as.
But I, I don't know that. We don't have an equation to see how many of those, uh, seasonally occupied were.
Right.
Right, but some people did, oh, yeah, rented during the winter when I'm not there, or whatever, but. That's when you already did, yeah, I mean, places are closed up for the winter, all along the lake shore.
Yeah. Yeah.
Yeah, oh, good stuff, you can tell my neighbors make their money in the winters, checking out the homes that are locked up. They do with the ones that are locked up.
Watch it, make sure nobody's breaking in.
Okay. So the Census Bureau data is really twenty twenty one?
Yes.
It's all ACS, American Community Survey five year data. For all years.
So, yeah, so it's, so it's maybe a five year swatch, but it's based on a lot of estimates and other indicators, it's not a pure census.
So is this twenty twenty three accurate? Should be twenty twenty.
Twenty twenty one.
Yeah. Okay.
Twenty twenty one.
Yeah, let's see, under this housing tenure, bottom there.
Yeah.
Choose that part. Right, what do you want, do you understand this, since nineteen eighty two thousand?
They cover a lot. Yeah, so, but the blacks is what was already.
When it says a, ACS data from, say, says twenty sixteen to twenty twenty, it basically means it's zero for twenty eighteen.
Yeah, like an average or something.
It's the midpoint of the.
Midpoint.
Yes.
Um. Uh, okay, well, that's interesting too. Okay, so. All right, I I gotta ask, I I'm not understanding, uh. We're on page seven. Uh, second paragraph starts with since nineteen eighty. Uh, second sentence says. In nineteen eighty two thousand, percentages were over fifty eight percent, while ninety and two ten were somewhere in the fifty one percent range, those kind of cross over on each other. I'm not sure.
I really get to.
What what it's trying to say.
Eliminator.
Yeah, that paragraph.
Okay, since.
Last sentence there in that paragraph, in nineteen eighty. I just, I. Okay, so. So the, uh. The the paragraph originally was talking about a decrease. An increase in total housing units by more than a hundred percent. Uh. From nineteen eight. Over this time period.
Well, that's doubled.
A falling wave of owner occupied housing units. As total housing units, uh, then I qualified, I didn't want to take that out, I mean, that's that's correct for that period, but then. From twenty to twenty twenty one, owner occupied housing units has increased to over seventy two percent again, I'm just wondering, would it be? We could take that one, that there's the, I like your last sentence, we take the third sentence out, or. Second sentence, or whatever, the nineteen nineteen eighty two thousand, that sentence is. Not sure what it's trying to say.
It's a bit hard to follow, but I think what it's trying to say is. Forget the numbers for a moment, but the percentage of owner occupied homes has varied.
Yeah, that's.
Roughly plus or minus seven percent. Over the years, but you know, it's gone up, it's gone down, and it's gone up, and it's gone down for reasons that we don't explain here. And we may not understand it, but.
Says that, there was a fuck, you know, an up and down. Which is fine, I don't know that we need to detail, because again, those two periods of time are overlapped with each other. And. Yeah, true, okay, I just take the sentence out, I don't think it really adds, I think what's in there and what you've added. Says it all.
Yeah, I'm not sure it's that important to understand in detail.
Part of it is, if, if that was, it goes more sequentially, it would show a trend.
Yeah.
But even taking it out. Um, since I didn't write the sentence, so I, I don't have ownership of the sentence, but, uh. Well, I think you can leave the nineteen ninety to twenty ten. Take out the nineteen eighty to two thousand. Okay.
Yeah, that'd be better.
That'd do the same thing.
Yeah.
Because you really got, you know, you've got half of that spread.
Yeah.
There you go.
So it'd be just, uh, just. Um, nineteen eighty through two thousand ten. I don't know.
Say owner occupied percentages were, owner occupied percentages. Uh, nineteen eighty to twenty ten were somewhere between fifty.
Yeah, just right, there we go. Put it in the same context. We could say it's a two thousand ten.
Right.
Or, I mean, it's, it's kind of an awkward sentence, it should say. Uh, either between nineteen eighty and two thousand ten, not in nineteen eighty and two thousand ten. That's, that's making separate, that's not what it said. Uh. Implying there was a jump in those two years, but I don't think that was. That's not borne out by the stats. Somehow. And, uh.
Where in the range of?
Well, range, it has to be arranged. In the, uh.
Occupied percentages.
This, so the next paragraph, you have to, you have to kind of. Basically take out the nineteen eighty to two thousand.
Yeah.
The, the interesting point here is. The ninety to ten time period. Sort of in the fiftyish percent range, but from ten to twenty one, it just jumped to seventy.
How that happened?
Yeah.
Well, guys, who's down?
Yeah, and.
Move into the county.
So you're thinking about, you have a whole number, a lot of people now, all of a sudden are theoretically. Taking advantage of their homeowner's exemption. The population of the county is being driven up, and, and the tax base is being eroded.
Being eroded, exactly.
There's a lot of that value is being taken out of the tax base to the homeowners.
And I wanted to go to the assessor and say. Let's, let's look at those numbers. Potentially, how much tax revenue? Has been lost due to homeowners, and, and that's exactly why the past assessor put that two people on the staff to analyze. Whether those exemptions are correct, they're actually being used correctly. Um, I don't know, that's still what the assessor's office is doing, I hope so. But I.
I think what they're doing is they're, they're compensating that by increasing your assessment values.
Recently, that's for sure.
Certainly true on mine.
Okay. Getting in that paragraph.
Alright, are these, these, I haven't looked, you have, you have a lot of money these charts to.
Charts. It goes back to nineteen eighty.
Yeah, but in there, it, it, it's, it's consistent, because it's saying in that time period. Uh, they were lower, but now ninety and ten and now twenty one are all higher. Right, so. So you need to call them, but you needed a twenty twenty one call. Make this chart.
Correct.
Well, I think the chart, which chart?
Down page.
There's a note that I got obliterated. It said, it needs to add, if we're gonna keep those two graphs. Then it needs to be added, I added the column in the chart, in the table. Charts and graphs are. They did, um. They're not there, and I don't know how to change it, so.
For twenty one, you say be in there and.
Yeah, consistent. That's in, in my notes, should be.
Yeah.
Okay.
There's another interesting conclusion there in that last paragraph, before this. Which is. Months for the growth in new housing units. Is in seasonally occupied. Units.
Yeah, according to the census.
So, are we, you know, it kind of leads you to the question, are we going to continue to see that trend of? People developing. Seasonally occupied units and then eventually moving here. I don't know. I don't know how we assess that.
If you looked at the last eighty years of Bonner County history, I'd say yes. In, in the forties, it was the bogus thing to do for a couple in Spokane to buy along, along Lake Bondere and put up a shack. And the shack got bigger and bigger, and then they started, you know, it was annual vacations, and they retired. And they seriously considered, you know, knock it down and build us a nice home, or just move in. So many people did that, even if it was. I think I've seen that for sure, because it, it was like. There was a lot of state leases.
Yeah.
Um, yeah.
They sold.
People bought those state leases out. And have completely rebuilt their houses and stuff, so.
Some people's houses were, were on their stroll at a pond rate, they were just summer houses, no insulation.
They hardly been on the wire.
Now, yeah, they are now, right? And I've seen, probably fifty, well, I don't know if I care to say fifty percent, but. So many of those old shacks. Got updated and modernized and everything, but I also know a lot of them got torn out, the big house. Like, um, Dirk's house there on. That little shack, that's like, that's your original house on those lots, and he built that. Thing. Yeah.
Alright, so. Um. Something with these. Graphs. Yeah, the graphs can be just supplemented, I mean, they're, they're visualization, so. Need not showing the comment that I made on it? I see, okay. So I added the column on the, on the table. And then paragraph below it, I scratched. Um. Yeah, see, there's my comment, it says. Five minutes ago, when I did it, uh, data for twenty twenty one, I added, the graphs also need to be updated, so. Uh, okay, and I came right out of census data. And then I'll be updating the. So, here's one of the first graphs, based on a table that has all kinds of extraneous, superfluous data in it. Comparing it to the state of I O, Ada County, Bow, Boundary County, Coopin County, and Valley County. Why? It's nice stuff, let's describe it.
Is, um.
For the geographically ignorant, is Valley County Sun Valley? Or that area or somewhere.
No, it's, 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 like you says, it's a small county. The people who put, the staff put it together, this document, and they searched the thing, kind of like what I did early on. To see a comparable area, what they're doing, and they found Valley County being more comparable, obviously to Coopie or even Bounder. So that's, that's why it shows up.
And, and you look at the graph there, and it's somewhat similar, but not really.
So we're taking the graph out?
Yeah, I'd say take it out, it's, it's not gonna lead us anywhere, right? It's not gonna.
Trying to live up to anybody else's.
Yeah. No way. No, you just wanna say, well, this was happening in Coopie, that's why they're coming here. And the same thing here, or that, okay, that was. And that, so that gets scratched. I just put it up, I put it up on the county, Bonner County cities. Needs to be updated. Where are you? Down below the. Okay, so right there, now. Um, I didn't do this because I haven't seen out of the. Out of the ACS stuff. Uh. The numbers for the cities. I think they're there, but I didn't, I wasn't able to pull them out. So this, this will be updated. Um, so I might need some. Point of finger where that data is. Uh. Yeah. That's the occupancy, the next paragraph gets into housing types for some reason, because there's a separate section for housing types. And I can deal with that by moving this over to that other section. Cause here's. Yeah, this, okay, the two tables here, and I think, oh, this is T one and T two. Uh. The, the bottom part of the top table. I need to have direction as to where to get those numbers as well. I've redone, as you see, I've redone today, it took me about an hour to do that, one, one table, updated all the numbers, it's all manual input. Um. So what, which, which call are you?
If you let me know what, like, you need updated, I can just. Transfer the whole thing, you don't have to do it manually, number one.
It doesn't go through and delete the old, put in the new.
So I'll just delete the whole table and.
And put it in the table, alright, that's better.
Yeah.
Now, also, what you'll notice, at, on the header of that table. It says, cause this is what census does, Fireford City, Dover City, East Hope City. Bologna, we're, we're home now, we don't need to say that Coopie's a city. So I scratched all the cities. Uh, again, that's just, I, I broke the habit of, of census, because. Yeah, they need to distinguish between Coopie City and Coopie County, well, we're in Bonner County, we know where Coopie is. So, um, beyond that, it's just refreshing the numbers.
I'd like a suggestion on the first two paragraphs in that section. I mean, I, I find those paragraphs to be difficult to read, cause it's. It's like a series of numbers. Uh, we could probably make a nice graph, chart or table, whatever, graph, I'm thinking, picture, not a table. That, that shows those differences in vacancy rates and the types of housing between the cities and the town.
I think there, isn't there, isn't there a graph, it's not what's, it's not, well. Yeah, is there a graph below that shows it?
It's in the table, I think, it was in the table.
The table.
Yeah, a picture, a, a graph would be more compelling, I think.
Once, once we are done updating the data here, I'll leave no graphs for every.
We'll just look at it critically from that standpoint, what's it gonna?
I mean, even by me, the tortured paragraph, the city at that percent. That, that's not a good way to follow, so.
I think that's important to do. To discuss it in paragraph form after a table, because then it summarizes.
But if we discuss, I think what we want to discuss is, not to just repeat the numbers, but what are the numbers?
What do they mean?
What do they mean?
What are they, what are they telling us?
Exactly, right. Do an analysis.
Yep.
Yep. And, and granted, some of that is, is missing from this whole presentation, because it should say, okay, here's the numbers. That they've increased, and like we just had the discussion about, wow, that means that. You know, all of a sudden, there's more people occupying their dwellings than they did twenty years ago, so that's the conclusion. So we need to, I need to bring some of that in. Uh. I guess it's one step at a time, I was. Filling stuff in and crunching numbers. Gets to the conclusions next.
You always have to start with data.
That's right.
Good lab project without data.
Okay, so. So you took a lot of those age structures. Yeah, age structures doesn't. I, I, I.
Yeah, it doesn't, it doesn't matter, doesn't lead us anywhere, it's not gonna be any kind of code that's gonna save your house from one fifty years, we're gonna tear it down.
How about this, uh, yeah, so I, I think I agree. So I added that paragraph in red just to talk about that, sure, age is it, but it's up to the owner. The owner can do it through S A plates. And in today's, like you said, in today's market. It has been found that for most people, it's more economic to upgrade and remodel than to tear down and start fresh. It just is. So.
Home heating sources.
Home heating sources, so what?
Are you now? Age fourteen.
Doesn't, doesn't do anything towards land regulation.
No.
Age structures doesn't, home heating sources doesn't. It's all part of census data, so it comes out of the ACS, but so what?
I agree.
Uh, housing types. Very, very long paragraph there. Um.
You, uh, you put the definitions.
I put the definitions back in. They are information, but. It makes for this. Terribly long paragraph. Which nobody's gonna read, or even if they did, and it's a so what paragraph. I mean.
That if you're gonna have this information, you need to, you need to define what you're. You know, attached and all that other stuff.
Well, arms, right, but, and so one of the arguments is. Census now calls a single unit. A. Uh, how do they put it? A detached. A one unit detached.
Hmm.
All the rest of the document calls it a single family dwelling. So what are we gonna do, which way? We gotta use, now adopt on a county standard. The census data, uh, lingo, or we're gonna stick with what we've had for. All the way from nineteen seventy eight till now, a single family dwelling, multi-family dwelling. Rather than a one unit.
Are they the same thing?
Yeah, yeah, a single family dwelling is just that. It's a one unit detached house. That, the difference is, we call it by the family that's living there, it's, a family can consist of one to. X number of people. It's not, no, it's a, a one unit or a single unit, um, dwelling. One unit detached structure, I agree, that's bureaucratic.
About ten, a ten structure, I wouldn't make that out of three or four units.
Anyway. I, I don't know, I don't wanna conjecture here on the record, but.
So what?
No, we were just discussing the word family. Yeah, well, and family, family. Is, is, uh. Shows animosity to, to family. It's, it's a sensitive word.
Yeah, that's what we was getting at.
Well, I think that's probably why census got away from using the word.
That could be.
But.
I do hope code defines a single family.
Yeah.
Yeah, we still have single family in the state code.
And, and we're Bonner County, right? Uh, yeah, so single family it is.
Alright.
Are you gonna convert this paragraph then to? Use that. Long as it have Cassie.
Purposes not a law zoning code, I ask you here, single family dwelling shall include any group of resident, there you go, so there's a. Up to a, eight or fewer unrelated persons.
Yeah. Yeah, that comes in later, because it talks about the group posing.
Group posing.
Or, what do we? So that could be, okay, that can be changed. Um. Well, either that or when you refer to the multi-family, or you gotta do a two plus detached.
Oh, they'd be attached.
Okay, well, I'm just having fun. Um, it'd be anything. There is such a thing as a two. Uh, two unit attached. That, that census looks at.
Okay.
Or no, one unit attached, and I, I've looked at that definition, that, well, it's in that paragraph, but it's kind of goofy. Means, the garage was there first, then you attached the house to the attached.
One unit attached, yeah, right. It's extension of the RV.
I guess, that's true. So, I mean, can you? What you put, can you convert their language into the? State code, you know, yeah, the state or county, I mean, it's in the county code too. Those definitions, yeah, which reiterate state code.
Single family dwelling?
You have to ensure that they're directed. So we'll, we'll, okay, we'll just update that. Uh. Not. ACS data. Okay. That's housing type, it'll be a whole lot shorter than that.
And when we get down here to, uh.
Housing distribution.
Oh, not housing distribution.
You're talking about housing types.
Mobile, mobile home units, blah, blah, blah. That census data from two thousand nine, twenty thirteen. Have correct data?
Yeah, it should, but that was all in that paragraph that I deleted.
So, back in.
Is a mobile home. Downwide. Classified as a mobile home or a single. Detached. According to whether it's stuck on the ground or not.
On like.
If it's, if it's sitting on top of the ground and not connected to the ground by, by.
So those really aren't.
Yes, but it's real, real property rather than real estate. Back to your.
Mobile home. Is a, is personal property.
Right? Right, right. Well, if one of those mobile homes were converted to, to real estate. The assessor has them taxed as either. One or the other, and it shows up in the record. So. It started to slice out, you know, all of them, whether they're manufactured homes or the old mobile home or a, or a travel trailer. They all come to the site on a wheel and a hitch, and they take the wheels off and they put it somewhere, off seven blocks or on a foundation.
But then it's a home. It's all a single family.
It can be considered real property, that it's tied down, right? But it's a house.
So we need this. Little added paragraph in here about. Mobile home, RVs.
Where are you now? Uh, by a mobile homes to which one or more permanent rooms have been added, okay.
No, no, no.
That paragraph that starts with inversely.
Right there.
Inversely.
Yes, inversely.
All the homes are slowly decreasing in numbers as percentage of total occupied housing units. This, and this is twenty thirteen data.
I mean, it's just a lot of.
Set up work, I guess we could.
It's interesting. It is interesting in light of some of the current discussions that are going on.
That's true.
Yeah, so maybe we should just have it updated to.
So, okay, so the structure type. The, the table right below that paragraph, that sentence. Doesn't that reflect all that?
It does, so this is an, this is an area where. Rather than having paragraphs that are just repeating the numbers that are in the table, I put the table and then have a discussion of what the table means or what.
Well, yeah, it's either you introduce the subject through a paragraph and then have the table, or you put the table in it, so I don't know. And it goes both ways in this document.
Yeah.
I just noticed something on the top of that table. Does that column that I added say two thousand ten? Uh, it should say twenty. Okay.
Twenty twenty?
Twenty twenty?
That red.
I wonder, I wonder how late at night I was doing that. My eyes were crossing.
Okay, that's, so that's twenty twenty one data?
Well, it's twenty twenty census data. That came right out of census on ACS. There's a, there's a difference, you go to different places. It's so confusing. Census is better than it was in past, but boy, it's still, there's nothing, okay, so confuse the best of us.
Yeah, one thing I don't, on the top of page seventeen, Dom. Where's this total occupied housing remnants? And the census of twenty in two thousand showed nineteen thousand six hundred forty six. However, in twenty twenty, it's only showing seventeen thousand forty three.
Yeah. Now, so that's, that's an interesting thing too. I, I grapple with that. Census data was. People going around and talking and getting numbers on forms and over the phone and all that stuff. So it's supposed to be. More accurate, and they don't call it an estimate, I don't think. They call it hard numbers, whereas the ACS. Which runs for five years are estimates based on other, other indicators. And they call those estimates.
So, so all those, all those numbers up and down that column go down.
In the same way that Nat was talking about, consistently lower in the, is this year, which you would think they'd all be higher, but all the numbers up above are saying we're growing.
I know.
So what do you do with it? Uh, maybe take center column out?
Well. Uh, I think. I- is it a sense, is it a situation where the, the? Center column and the right hand column is a bit of apples and oranges, because they, they come from two different methodologies.
Could very well be, although I, I quoted it as census. I don't know, that's two thousand.
It doesn't make any sense the way it's there. It's just gonna confuse everybody.
Yeah, I don't think it's, I'm not sure it's consistent, but.
Yeah, I agree with that, yeah, it is. Now you say seventeen thousand.
So rather than maybe. Right. I didn't even catch that.
It's probably half as small as things.
But it was, it's quoted as census and the, the reference takes it from census data from two thousand.
Up above, we say eighteen thousand eight hundred. Total occupied.
Okay, I'll bet you that's from. The twenty twenty two or twenty twenty one. ACS. Yeah, I'm pretty sure it is.
Why don't we use something that's consistent?
Okay, yeah, so that should be. Whoa.
Quick, quick.
Are we talking about? Are we taking this, this inversely paragraph?
Uh, I, I think so. It, it caught me kind of like, what is it trying to say? This inversely. But I, then I changed the numbers. Oh, that's squatting there, but. Alright, so it's not a change. So what's this one called? This? Sounds like housing.
Unit, no. It makes no sense that the total number of. No.
Well, yeah, right, because even, you know, originally this was two thousand nine to thirteen, so that was community survey. And it said seventeen three eighty eight. And based on that number, it's gone now.
Census numbers are slightly higher than, than the ACS numbers.
In the what numbers?
The ACS.
See, that's just sort of, if I describe it as an intermediate estimate that they do between the.
Census two ninety, two thirteen estimate. So. Yeah, so an estimate throws you off, you think you've lost something and, and maybe not, maybe it's, maybe it was higher, but so what is the new number? Um, that's seventeen oh forty three, where that come from. I think that came also from the ACS numbers not from the two thousand census. Or two thousand twenty.
Paragraph starts inversely, I keep going backwards.
Yeah, there's no.
Inversely, you don't have any, you don't have any, uh. This is like twenty thirteen.
I see, that's right there, that is years ago. That twenty twenty one column.
It was not in this paragraph.
It says estimate, these are all estimates, so this is out of American Community Survey.
I, I understand it, but. Whatever it is, it's an estimate, it should be a twenty twenty one estimate. Otherwise, we're looking at data that's ten years old.
How about if we just include the last column? I don't really care what it was in ninety or twenty thousand, you know, forty three. I mean, what relevance, I mean, just. Say, and what it is currently, twenty twenty.
There's the seventeen oh forty three, how did that?
All those numbers are in, in your chart on here, and follows those right to a T on twenty ten. Seventeen forty three, 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 six, five, five, oh, right.
Yeah, I saw you go back to the, your, uh. Shoot. I grabbed the wrong column.
Oh, okay. Well, that explains it.
Yeah. Okay, so this is in. So give, what's the example? So what's the total housing units on the chart for twenty?
Twenty twenty? Is that eighteen thousand something?
Did I add a column?
Eight is what it says above, so.
Cause I scratched the old column, nineteen ninety.
Yeah.
Did I add a column to twenty twenty one?
No, twenty twenty, even twenty eighteen, it says fourteen three five.
Even this twenty ten data here, it's ACS data, it's not census data from twenty ten. All this is ACS. All these years.
So it's, it's.
So we either compare census to census, that is a ten year gap, or we either compare ACS data to ACS data.
Yeah, don't compare. Yes, it's ACS.
No, well, do we need this? Do we need all this information? I just think we need the last column, the current, most current data that you have. Now that's what's reiterated up top, the first couple of tables, eighteen eight fifty one. So that's what, so I'm wondering if, if I, maybe that's what I lost when I shut the thing down last night. Well, I thought I had added that, that twenty twenty one data column. All the way down through to that table. And it must've gotten lost.
Yeah, I think if we, I think if we put the twenty twenty, the real twenty twenty one data in here, this table would make sense.
And just call it, because I scratched the nineteen ninety column, see?
Which makes sense, that's old history.
So there's twenty, twenty, two thousand, twenty ten, and then twenty twenty.
Yeah.
Or twenty twenty one.
Yeah.
Yeah, right, you did grab twenty ten.
Yeah, I think so, because that, that was.
No, 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 he grabbed the wrong chart. He put twenty ten up there above, and that's probably the information he was using.
Yeah, we went down. Seems weird, it's occupied housing units. But why do you have to, you know, we just. Earlier, but think back to twenty ten.
Right?
Yeah. So, everything was static or declining, just. We hadn't come back out yet by twenty ten.
We barely, I believe it's listed. We'll see. We could, I could add the twenty twenty one column or even twenty twenty, but twenty twenty one is the numbers from both, so let's use that.
Yes.
So there's all the numbers that go into a new column, added to that table.
Okay.
It's still really interesting that between twenty ten or twenty thirteen. And twenty twenty one, we've only gained eighteen hundred occupied housing minutes. So that's only two hundred a year.
The numbers are very low.
Either, either the census data just didn't get to, now you guys were here ten. There, in those years, right after, oh, eight, oh, nine, was there like nothing going on?
Exactly, nothing, nothing, it was underwater, nothing.
It just, it was amazing. This place just dried up. People were leaving. Uh, people would, they, they couldn't work here, they were trying to go someplace else. It was, it happens. It was, it was like Seattle in nineteen eighty one. You can list a bazillion properties, but you never saw one.
Alright, so we're gonna fix all that. Housing density and distribution.
So only the twenty twenty one data is working here?
Yes. Uh, just add a column. Cause we're gonna scratch the, the nineteen ninety column and then. Add, replace it with a, I mean.
It's quite a way.
So, so in that case, we should be, we should be taking data from twenty thousand and. And probably don't have the two thousand ACS, but we should be taking data from twenty twenty ACS.
ACS or census?
Not census, we shouldn't be comparing census to ACS data.
That's what I'm wondering. Because if you look at the table. It says census nineteen ninety census, twenty census twenty. But then it says estimates. But I think.
I think estimates only.
For that one column.
One column, yeah.
So, so therefore to do a straight comparison, it should be twenty twenty census estimates, which would be a different number than was shown earlier in the document. So, okay, that's gonna cause a. Discrepancy, I think.
Well, as long as it's clear that it's a different.
Yeah, and different purpose. Um, okay.
I, I.
This is interesting.
I don't think it's gonna cause any discrepancy. Census data is more accurate. If we, if we want to use it for some of the numbers, there is no harm in doing that.
True.
Even if it doesn't match the ACS data.
Yeah, and, and it's, it's explained above, that that's from American Community Survey. Now, maybe that needs to be explained somewhere. American Group Survey is an estimate based on a five year range, blah, blah, blah.
I, I have the citations for these, for these tables, I'll just insert them. Wherever we need them, yeah.
Good, yeah, cause it needs to explain, especially if there appears to be a discrepancy of numbers. Okay, so we're down a page. Or so, a little bit table.
Density and distribution.
So this field, are the twenty twenty census data?
Yes.
So this is interesting, so, uh, twenty twenty one. Just twenty eight thousand one sixty crosses of land, created characteristics residential tax purposes. Twenty twenty one, county listed only fourteen thousand one fifty two. So that's different, so there's.
Those are homeowner exemptions, though.
Yeah, so it doesn't equate to.
Right.
So what's the point of that? Where are we? And this is housing density and distribution.
Okay.
So what's the point? Let me just get there, I'm, I'm. Losing my marbles here.
Well, this, it's, other than it gives you a clue of, of how many homes are owner occupied full time versus seasonal or rental. Uh, but to me, this looks like a lot of this is a restatement of the data that we had right up in that.
Well, that's right, that's what I wondered, could, I found a lot of this, there were restatements of data from. Previous.
So this is because that's the way they wrote it last time?
Yes, if we, I'm just, I'm just.
I would say let's write that in one place.
Right, and I, I attempted to do that to eliminate the repetition, unless it was pertinent to the discussion.
And I also think, again, these paragraphs with this numbers after number.
Yeah.
Make it a picture.
We, we do have a, we have to, we do have the table that we're gonna write the.
Alright, so. There's the acreages, but that didn't.
The density is new info, right? We haven't talked about density.
No.
Okay, well, well, let's back, can we go on the first paragraph?
Yes.
Under housing density, I don't understand what these numbers are telling me. So you're saying up in the second sentence. You have twenty seven point two units per square mile. Then you go down to the city's density. Nine oh four, nine oh four per square mile.
It says the same thing, city average densities show. Alright, you can, you can say.
Go down in density because it annexed more land or. Or there's fewer units. I mean, I just.
Nine forty seven.
I guess it's informational.
I mean, it's just.
It's what it is, right, so yeah, it's, it's what the numbers show.
Yeah, okay. And there it is, right there in that. And, uh, and density per square mile, so. East Hope is the same way. Oh yeah, they didn't change any. There was discrepancy.
Population data. That we have. Wasn't there a? We have a. People per year, people, people per square mile.
Yes, it's.
No, it's on twenty seven or twenty nine.
Unfortunately, that calculation was done on a different area basis. It was done on the entire square mile basis of the county, rather than stripping out the forest land that can't be occupied, the state land that can't be occupied. Lake Ponderay and, and Trees Lake, which can't be occupied.
So the twenty seven point two, well, keeps all of it.
Talked about boats.
There's, there's boats is on the far right.
I know, I'm just giving you.
There's a hundred and ten total county that are on.
And it's going down.
And it's going down, but they're sinking. So I. This is average housing density is twenty seven point two units per square mile.
Right.
My recollection is that. Population per square mile is about that same number.
Uh, probably because, okay, probably because again. When I, when Swanee and I did all of the chopping down of the square mile that's available to use as the bottom part of the calculation.
Uh, could you exclude your federal land?
Yes. Federal lands, excluded state lands, excluded anything that was publicly owned. Excluded federal lands, excluded state lands, excluded anything that was publicly owned. And the water.
So who's gonna down? We didn't state that clearly.
And.
But everybody knows.
So there's, there's two parts to that, so then you get total population versus total available area. That's including the cities or unincorporated, which strips out the cities and the other stuff. And that's explained, I thought it was explained in the.
So that, you're taking out the lakes and.
Large.
Yeah, see, that's seventeen thirty eight. Uh, that's, that's a gross number.
Okay.
Well, this is what I was getting at.
Yeah.
So it's, this, this has. Twenty seven point two people per square mile. Now, we're saying, is here twenty six, twenty seven point two housing units? Same number, that's one person per housing unit?
It, no, it makes sense, because, because. All over half, but Don is excluded over half of the land. In this calculation, because he's excluded the federal land, the state owned land, municipalities, and the square. Mile inch of Lake Ponderay and Priest Lake. Because you can't.
The last. The last sentence in that paragraph said sixty seven people per square mile.
So, so it does make sense, and then we saw in the earlier table that the average number of people per residence is something like two point three, two point four.
Right.
So, so it all makes, that all makes sense.
I hesitated to do it this way, but I just couldn't get past it, because I knew that the population was based on the entire, that seventeen twenty eight total county area. But even the seventeen, it's nineteen nineteen, one thousand nine hundred nineteen square miles is the entirety, the boundary of Bonner County. You take out the lakes.
Seventeen twenty eight, excuse me.
See what it says, right, it says, federal land, state lands, incorporated cities. Oh, that's the unincorporated area seventeen twenty eight. Uh.
That's all, that's all of it.
Right.
So this is, the first one is only excluding the water bodies, but it includes all federal lands and state lands as well as cities.
Right, just excluding the water.
And then.
And you take out the cities.
Then we take out the federal lands, we take out the state lands, we take out all the cities excluding Spirit Lake. Because Spirit Lake is only, only a small portion of Spirit Lake is in Bonner County, most of it is outside of it. So I didn't exclude. Spirit Lake, the area of Spirit Lake from this, all the Spirit Lake numbers from these numbers. And then finally, we, we get the unincorporated Bonner County area, which is six seventy eight.
Six seventy eight point one.
Miles.
So it's just a coincidence that this twenty seven point two is almost exactly the same as the.
Yeah.
People.
It's pretty rare now, like. It's just happened that with the two point seven three, you, you took out a little number that counts the land.
Because forty four percent of the land is federal and fifteen point, fifteen is state, so you've got sixty percent of the land.
Yeah.
And then the, the, the number of people per house is that, well, like we said, is two point three or something, so.
Do the math backwards. Almost to the, almost to the tenth, okay.
Well, to be exact, it's twenty eight point.
Twenty eight point, yeah, it is, it's a, it's a strange.
But if, if we were to calculate it on the, uh, on the overall. Area of Bonner County, which is seventy eight, uh, seventeen, seventeen hundred twenty eight square miles. It's going to be fifteen point two units.
Yeah.
Per square.
But yes, that's, and it's, it's, it's just numbers.
Yeah.
But I thought, why not make it realistic? Highly because when you calculate city density. It's to the city limits. There, there is no federal land, there isn't, so it's apples to apples, you want that? Why not do it? So. The, the, it's available.
It, it makes sense, I think, to do housing based on the available land where we can actually.
Because we're aiming, it's available in Bonner County to develop, to live on. Uh, yes, I know there's people living on the national forest.
Well, they, they, the, the, the one determinant about cities, though, is that's where you have all your. Uh, commercial. Uh, establishments.
True enough.
Uh.
But at least it's a coordinate.
And, and government offices, the support house, et cetera, I mean, so that takes that land out of, uh, out of density, you could, as well.
You could filter the city area down to a lower number.
Square miles.
Or counties.
Sounds similar.
You know.
County.
Well, I'd say the densities are lower in those because they don't have sewer, they can't build in, just, yeah, so they're on septic, some wells, and you're. Spread out geographically.
But.
You're, uh, I know, or, or in, in municipalities that don't have a sewer system.
Where are those?
Uh, we'll get this to this later, but.
Well, every city in this country has, has a municipal system and a water system, yes, but there's a lot of unincorporated area.
So just.
True. Okay, to that in a minute, because you asked that question. Um, hopefully.
Alright, so.
I see that's from the total number of housing units data. In this table is from the census of twenty.
From the census.
Which is slightly higher than the ACS data from twenty twenty one. So if we go back and we look at the census ACS data from.
Pretty close to that nineteen.
Yeah, I'm on the close, alright, so there's, there's a little exercise that we should do is to. Do a, a. Apple to apples comparison, the ACS to the twenty twenty census. Because if twenty twenty census is the better number to use, then let's just use that. I, I chose to use twenty twenty one or twenty twenty two because it's more recent, people say, well, it's old data. But if it is what it is, and the other is on an estimate that doesn't really reflect reality, why should we use?
Because twenty twenty census data does, it's still not completely out, all we have is read, it's data for twenty twenty census.
No.
And that's why we need to go to ACS.
Yes, yeah, okay, there's.
Yeah.
Are we actually gonna have a housing distribution map?
That was a good question, there isn't one in there now that I saw. Uh, why we have it? Well, I just, again, it was in the documents, so I'm questioning whether or not it should be. That's why it's in green.
Why we take it out?
See that paragraph right there, housing distribution map, provided, plus not provided, never was developed, or it's not included, but I, let's just take it out. I mean, at, at the scale of the county, it's, it's meaningless. Especially with the categories.
Okay, housing costs and values? Okay, so that looks like it's all going out.
Well, that paragraph, and then, the paragraph is, it's all totally out of date. Uh, and it, I can explain things further down to put it back in context. Uh, that graph, or that, that, yeah, that graph, again, why are we comparing with everybody else, scrap the graph, or make a new graph? To do what they say, just put a paragraph, a bunch of numbers in. But I didn't change the stuff in green, I haven't changed it yet, because. I don't know that. Um. I couldn't very quickly grab the numbers to update that error.
Okay, so that needs to be updated.
Yeah, if you can.
And then this, we'll take this chart out because we're not using that.
But, right, it's, it's a.
How does a census get housing values anyway? Do they ask homeowners what they think the value of their houses?
Or do they? Do they?
Go to MLS. But we're not very accurate.
Only bucks. Is it assessed at, assessed value or?
It could be, I.
It's too low.
I would.
It's really.
It's two thousand thirty, twenty thirteen data.
Twenty thirteen data?
So it is, it's outdated.
If I was to say two thousand nine and twenty, isn't it?
No.
No, I mean, if anything, we keep it as a comparison to say, look what's changed. Maybe after the, the median sale price back, that was two hundred and twenty thousand.
That's all, and it's all information, I don't see the purpose.
It just, it's just to show.
Can I hear it with it?
Trend, no trend. Anything that we can use to show a trend. Is valuable. If it's just superfluous, purely that, then no.
Well, then are you gonna add a, a twenty twenty three?
Yes, or, or something, I mean, I'm, like I said.
All the sales data.
Okay, here, um.
Swanny, if you would put this in. And under, uh. You see, the, the folders that I've got on there.
There's a.
Bring it up.
I've had one up here that already said.
It did.
It did, but I wonder where it came from, because Matt, Matt pulled.
That's relevant.
MLS data, uh, for sales of properties and with or without houses. And, uh. So the housing. And.
No, 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 what happened?
It's okay, I mean, I, we're just.
Sales never slide through.
The folder says sales info. So either one of those. So this is what Matt researched and, and put out here, so this is interesting, it has. Uh, the, the type, oh, uh, here. Uh, two thousand twenty nine hundred nine listings, countywide. Sold with the median value of that, and then there's the details of it. Uh, all the way down through, then the same thing with. Uh. Unin, uninhabited land, just a raw piece of land, there's another table that shows that, so here's the values that, that, you know, show up. And they're quite astounding. Uh, plus he did another one that just brought it back down to dollars per acre for the land.
Is this, um, is it countywide? This includes the cities.
So, you can see right there, it says point five acres or more, that's pretty much gonna preclude cities, that was the way that Matt attacked it. Pretty much, I mean, yes, there's some, but for the most part, it, it fits. Anything that's one and a half acre is gonna be in the county. Plenty of those in the county. Right, a half acre or less. So there's some that are missed. Because of that, I mean, there's, there's many lots out there, point two, three acres.
Yeah.
On the able days.
Right, the important thing is that a research was done the exact same criteria, you know.
Right.
And so that was the comparison, what is the apples to apples?
Yeah. And then there's the. Yeah. There's the, there's the combined data. So it's quite revealing, especially comparing it to that other paragraph that said the median was two hundred and twenty.
And, and it's kind of interesting, because I think on the other one. They, they, they asked the assessor, I think they were going off assess values. Oh, but yeah, but the problem is back then even, uh, the last several years, the assessed values are very close to the.
Getting, getting closer to the sale value.
Yeah, they're getting very good.
Especially where. They're, they're doing it based on comparable sales.
Right.
So. Why should your assessed, or, or assessed value come in under sale value or even appraised on, right? So.
This is sealed by.
This is sales, a median sales price.
Yep, and I, I had just pulled up more red pockets, because part of this, it goes into, uh, back, I think it was a quote from. Uh, Haynes. Yes, for Haynes. Uh, there was, uh, eleven hundred vacant land listings, and that has been pretty steady number of active listings in that last eleven hundred.
Yeah.
Right now, today. Vacant land listings, all sizes, two hundred and twenty six active vacant land listings. A median price.
Yeah.
But it was vacant my listeners.
Right.
How old?
In three hundred and twenty two thousand nine hundred.
Because you know this. Just for leading, because it a lot.
Yeah.
Because I know that in the Priest Lake area. Uh, I see a lot of houses sold, uh, going on there.
Right.
So it's, you know, a good portion of them, maybe not Priest Lake, that direction up there. Um, I think rest of county, a very good portion of them are, are through the homeowners service.
Yeah, because.
I mean, get, uh, would it be? It might be interesting, uh, if we. Compare these sales numbers with the assessed value. So that's gonna be assessed value of all functions. What? For this document?
Yeah. What's it gonna lead to?
Well, I mean, even this, this is nothing more than to show, there's a trend in value and sale prices, so what's happening with the housing market? What's happening with the availability of housing for low income, lower income, but any.
So what, where does, where does that chart go here?
Well, that's one of the things that is gonna be interesting, I, I think, is, at some point, we may wanna have a discussion about, about affordability, right? And so, rather than just looking at a median. I think it may be interesting to look at a distribution of sales prices.
And that's.
How many, how many homes are in this range and that range, or at least, they have fairly set criteria for, based on income. Versus affordability, and so what's, what's affordable for, uh, well, it's some number, eighty percent of the population of the county. Right, and how many of the homes are in that range?
Right, so I think what is, which one, which component, I think you have the, the data on the median income.
In economic.
Enough. Of economics, and it was, it was fifty one thousand and change.
Right.
And then you. And, right, and so I think I emailed that to you, didn't I, don't worry, but I gunned in, done a search, about fifty one thousand median income, household income. And when you times it by, uh, the interest rate is at six and three quarters a day. And then, and then you go ahead and take thirty percent of your gross income in order to be considered affordable. So you take thirty percent of that fifty one thousand dollars, then divided by four, it'll give you a monthly payment, that's principal and interest only, it doesn't include taxes, insurance, and mortgage. And right now, that fifty one thousand are. Income, household income qualifies for a hundred and ninety six thousand dollar mortgage. None, there's this in the MLS, and it's been that way for a long time, that we even bank qualifying. That's the problem we're facing.
So that kind of analysis.
So somebody should down maybe to.
I think that, that, yeah. And one of the. House programs, and USDA RD, rural development. Um, they have a program for lower income, and I, and I just got the, the updated, I think I emailed that to you as well.
Yeah.
And it's fifty eight. Uh, for a family up to one to four, they will, uh. You have an income up to fifty eight thousand a year. And you get a zero down payment, and instead of a thirty year, they'll amortize it over thirty three, if you show a certain criteria, they'll extend that to a thirty eight year. Um, and so that's one of the nicer programs I have out there, because it is zero down. And it is, it used to be eighty percent of median income, they raised that this year. And if you have a family of five to eight, you can have an income up to seventy six thousand dollars.
Hmm.
And qualify, and so then you're getting closer to the four hundred thousand dollar figure, still, I don't know.
Yeah, it's still a ways off, uh, but yeah, so, including that kind of data, the housing. Programs, that's in here, there's a section that covers that, but it talks about. It doesn't, I, I don't even think it mentions, uh. Uh, USDA rural development as a, as a. Piece of the pie.
No, it should, but the other ones that were mentioned here, I, I don't think they apply at all. Well, I got ahead, and on, I think it was on version two, I had a little side thing about.
Oh.
USDA RD and all their criteria.
Yep.
Um, that was in version two.
Yeah.
So it's.
And that was good, that was good information.
But still, I think, we're gonna, I think it's gonna be helpful to understand the distribution of housing prices.
And, okay, so.
Maybe every.
So those tables that, that. Are put together, that Matt put together, um, they show the range. Of housing in that, you know, half acre, whatever category that each, each of those tables was built on. Yeah, so there he talks about. Oh, yes, yeah, there it is.
What's that?
Well, that's, that's in version two of the document. That's a separate one, so you gotta open up that one, see.
I'm sure it's all one document.
I know, I, I struggle with that, uh, we, if that. That was part of my problems last two weeks.
Huh?
Well, we all think grab what's there and import it to the other file.
So that gives.
Yeah.
That gives.
Totally crazy. Anyway, but housing, the gist of it is to take that comment, our, put that in for made of it's. Now, just look into that, figure out.
Difference, meaning, they're not in.
Alright, so. So it's gonna be substantial, but I'm just saying, this, yeah, I'm taking, you know, the bottom twenty percent of housing.
So let's come down.
Twenty percent. Okay. So, so we can own in on. What's the stock of more affordable houses, not just the median is five fifty five or whatever. What's the stock of more affordable housing? Not just the median is five fifty-five or whatever.
Right.
Where are we now?
Well, we gotta go back to our document, there we go. So that, that needs. A lot more work, um. Uh, the table, the table scrapped.
Are you gonna import the table?
It shows the, the values, yes. I mean, all the data that, or most of the data that Matt provided can go into this section. Just explain it. But I, I like that idea of showing. How it's arranged, cause those median prices are, be- because. Median is just that, it's the midpoint. The range in those things is huge. From millions to millions down to a few hundred thousand. So this, it's this big, it's gonna be. That's what we're gonna, let's go, we are gonna put, uh. Yeah. Yep. Alright. So going down.
Can we make a note here?
Yeah, make a.
So next section is homeowner. And rent costs as a percentage of income.
Yeah.
Could be easier for rent as well.
I don't know what they use for rent.
Which be considered affordable by the.
Yeah, see this housing needs, yes.
Okay.
But landlords know. Yeah. That if housing costs are going up. Then their rental costs. And they do, and actually, well. Company, I don't know, i- in this community, but are owned by corporations that buy vacant houses and put it into their pool of rentals and. So what I'm saying. Is. We really should know. What our shortage is. Yeah. Vacancy rate has always been, that's part of census data too. Vacancy rate of rental units, uh, so we can show that, but. I don't know, it's, it's, it's all part of building the case for what's being. So we wanna do that. Um, certainly could, getting the data now. I think a lot of that is available in the census data. And we rely on that rather than truly going to the Bonner County Housing Authority or, or whatever, public agency. Or one of the rental companies. Uh, they're all gonna tell you different numbers. That's the problem. For their agency, uh, Bill Brown, right now he has. Seven hundred units, that he's representing two hundred of them are vacant, or that's this week. Whatever, those aren't real ones, those aren't real ones. And this, what's the other, what's the other, uh? Uh, management company that has cropped up here in the last ten years?
Um, R L or, uh, standpoint or.
Around the block from Lady's office, um.
Yeah, there's Doherty.
Doherty, that's the one. Yeah, Doherty, they're, they seem to be scooping up all the.
Unless, that's what we saw, Blake.
Yeah, yeah. It was Doherty. We've seen them at a few hearings too. Uh, anyway, uh, okay. Homeowner vacancy. Yeah, rental vacancy, right, there it is, right there. So it's percentages again, but that's fine. But the numbers are low. Looking all the way across all those years, they never, they never budge. They're down, pretty far down, the homeowner vacant vacancy rate is down now to one point five percent. So.
Okay, is there a figure? Of merit for rental vacancy that is an indicator that. It's not enough units? What do they consider an, sort of a normal vacancy rate based on turnover? So, or a number like that, you know? I, real estate world for rental properties.
Not, we haven't done too many rounds, but I don't, I, I don't think they're much bigger. I think it's under five percent. That means. Half to four percent right there. So I would say, looking at these numbers. So you can have any excess rental. Uh, yet I know people who have come out of. Nursing care facilities and they're immediately in an apartment. Just like that. So it's. Yeah. Optimistic. No, just think about. Nursing homes provide all kinds of care, short term, long term.
Yeah.
Short-term care, you know, but they don't have a permanent place, so they're, they end up in an apartment.
You know what's interesting, um, you're, you're gonna have to go when we were discussing some of this stuff, the housing. Um, I, I got ahead and went and talked to the, uh, multiple places trying to stay home. We have three, travel, one, two, three, maybe four.
Four, anyway.
Um. Your vacancy rate is, is your own material, and Travel American Park, she said. I asked her, what's your vacancy rate? She'll answer, they haven't had a vacancy in four or five years or so.
Oh, and across the highway over there too.
Yeah, exactly. There's no vacancy there at all. Um, and then Travel American Park also does RV slips, but they don't have a certain number that are for.
All around or permanent.
Type of thing year round, uh, they're always full and, um. It, they have, you, you, you can't, you can't get an RV spot or a.
It's strange. We've had quite a few, a number of. RV parks instituted here in the last ten, twelve years. Uh, by conditioning instrument. And I go by those frequently, the ones that are visible, and there's a lot of them where the units have been there for. Quite a while, shall I say? Probably more than they're supposed to be. They've got skirting and everything else, you know, and, and. Yeah, so I, I don't know, but and those things. Regardless of the short or long-term aspect of it. Those RV parks are full, almost all the time, all year round. It's amazing.
Yes.
Plus the storage lots are full of RVs. Too many toys. Too many toys, let alone the ones that are being lifted.
Yeah.
But it's all part of housing. Anyway, okay, let's go back to the document, where are we? So quarter to seven.
How about, uh, are we done with this section?
Uh, you're gonna have to. Is that where we? Excuse me, we were at the homeowner rent costs as percentage. Okay, that's what we just said. And the, the option here, comment is either we strike it or. Updated.
Updated.
But, but I, so I'm torn because. It's an aspect of it for sure. But how many, how many more indicators do we need? Because there's, there's never gonna be a code that's gonna say, if you're a low percentage, you're gonna care to, our title guarantee you a place to live, no. No, but I think that the, you know, the buildings make affordable housing, the tension here. And seeing the community, uh, changing. The county changing, where the, the, uh, previous. Base of, of high wage earning jobs, relatively speaking, lumber industry. Uh, those types of industries, those. Uh, are, are, are disappearing, and you're getting into more retail, you're getting into more. Uh, uh. Recreational, and those jobs inherently. And where I come from agricultural, uh. Wages are so low. That there's a widening gap that's occurring here, and these, and I think also these median. Income or, uh, numbers that we're seeing for housing units is being driven by, uh. Affluency from outside. And from, uh, retirements, et cetera. I don't know if those numbers, but what was the. Th- there was a gap here that's going to. I think. As a. A, a breakdown.
Okay. Yeah, that's, that's basically workforce housing.
That's why, yeah, that's why we see the companies.
We need it, we need to. Address it somewhere. Well, that's, it's, it's, it's going on Cree Slade, I'm sure.
Now, this topic can be covered by that, I think. Oh, it's. Um, open market housing for people coming in and stuff. That seems to be taken care of itself. It's the residents that are here. The families growing up and the kids trying to stay in Bonner County, find a place to live and work. It's the, uh, the, even the, the summertime workers that come in for the farms and the wintertime workers that go to Schweitzer. Up the Cree Slade, all the resorts, they have, some of them have housing, we saw last year, it decreased that house. The code already provides for that.
But does it do that as effectively? As it should or could? I mean, it struck me when we, when we saw that application from Hills. I mean, it. They didn't have to go through too, jump through too many hoops, but we, but they didn't have to jump through some hoops to do something.
Right, cause it just wasn't a, a outright use of that. Property in that zone.
Right, cause it was, but it was right across the street.
It's definitely right across the street. Well, there's the breakdown, you know, there's only districts and the complan, uh, designation to the map. We didn't look at it person by person.
Yeah.
We, we never will.
Yeah, I'm not sure what the solution is, but.
But.
No, I think that was the problem. They are recreation, but right across the street they own, I think it was a five acre parcel and it was. So it's R five or.
Yeah.
Wasn't recreational. Wasn't, it wasn't a place where you could put multifamily housing, which effectively is what they're workforce housing.
And, and, well, I don't know. Too much discussion about this, but. One of the things is to allow some of those are Dan Seisters. What? Oh, condition you just. Uh, in that, like, we, we had a conversation, I think, or I think we're, yeah, on here. Um, you, you know, we, we allow duplexes and multiple zones. But if you go ahead and read it, it says like, number eight, or number eight low.
Yeah.
You have to have double the, double acres, so in an R five zone, if you want duplex, you have to have ten acres. So that was, so yeah, so you basically have to have two lots, well.
What's the difference?
There's no, there's no address.
Yeah.
There's no, so that, so, so something like that, for instance, further down in the document. It comes to, there's, there's these two, three, three studies that were done, the BBC study and the Fair Market Housing Study and so forth. And they made a whole bunch of recommendations, and one of them was our lots. Uh-huh, well, that could be addressed, and there was also in that section, we'll see. The staff at that time responded to those indicators of those, those. Things that the survey or the study said should happen, and they said, well, Bonner County Code does this, Bonner County Code does this. So those could be looked at and furthered, and we could put that in there now, and ended up, it's gonna be in a policy or in a, in a goal. That, uh, to allow for whatever, I'm trying to, we would wanna frame it, but to say that, so we cure that for, for one.
Yeah, I, I have, I, I do look at CUPs as being, uh, uh, in some cases, a better way to handle that. Because it allows you to look at the specific circumstances of what they're proposing and where it is.
Alright.
And you can, you can put some conditions in to mitigate the impact on the area. So, so in general, as long as it doesn't become two owners of a process where people can't do it, they don't want.
Yeah, see, yeah.
The panelists there.
It, it is, because it is, it is a stepping stone and. You know, I, I, I really don't think the public understands what, if something's conditionally permitted. Uh, they don't, they don't, you're right.
Between permitted and permitted and conditionally permitted.
I think the public.
It's got a scene in that box, you can do it. You just have to go through the riggers and find out what the conditions are.
Right.
Or, or people would say that.
Yeah, or we add some more numbers down there and we go ahead and put the standards, they have to have a, a sign up and panel prior, because we don't. Do that right now, but that's part of the conditioning process, is we require that. Uh, we have to have road and bridge sign up, I mean, all these other things that we address in the CUP. If we put that as a standard instead of making them go through that CUP process, uh. Um, I don't know, and that's, yeah, that's a question for Swati and Travis.
Well, and it's something that we should somewhat figure out and make a goal. That's what goals are about.
So there are.
Look into this, make sure that you do this, and over time it can be accomplished, doesn't mean it's, it's not long. We're saying, it should be this way, so look into it.
Yeah, there are a few things with CUPs that could make them harder to pursue or make them easier to pursue. Such as these conditions that are the. That, that are associated with each of the users. And there are also application requirements as to what the applicant is required to submit to the planning department prior to the, prior to going to a hearing. For example, um. For mining, filing applications, you have to provide a, provide an application for.
Reclamation.
Reclamation plan that has already been submitted to Idaho Department of Plans, it's not a. It's not something that the applicant could provide later.
But in the context of what we're talking about here, housing that may not be. Outright permitted in a particular zone. I mean, to Matt's example, talk about duplexes, for example. Or, or maybe more generally multifamily housing. In a zone where maybe it's not permitted outright. You know, I, I would wanna be looking at, well. How many units on how big of a piece of property, okay, it's gonna be. But I don't think it makes sense to say, you, you have, you have, you have to have double the lot for a duplex. You're not giving anybody anything that right time, like, so, how many units on how big of a property? And, and I would wanna look probably a little bit at traffic. Impact, and I probably wanna look a little bit at panhandle health, cause if it's out of the county and they're not on a. Uh, sewer system or what, you wanna look at that, what's feasibility from a subject and well perspective? You might wanna look at, yeah, maybe some, some mitigation, landscaping mitigation, that kinda stuff. And, and, and I think if it's reasonable, it's a reasonable process. To me, that's, that's an interesting way to, to try to. Provide some lower cost, higher density housing out in the county.
But I mean.
That's what I was just saying, put it in the cities, which, I'm all, I, I mean, I think ultimately it's probably always gonna be cheaper to build in the cities. Where they have the infrastructure, they have the urban type of infrastructure. Um, are we gonna see those areas grow through ACIs over the next ten years? I don't know, there was, I read something a month or two ago from. Sandpoint, it seemed like that was a direction.
That's the direction you were thinking it needs to go.
That study that was done, the.
So like Matt said, if we wanted to make it easier for workforce, workforce housing to be able to build. Close to their. Uh, place of business. Then possibly that's what we could do, add those conditions. As a, as part of their permit instead of having them go through a CUP.
What are they also saying? Make them standards, define them upfront, so people can read them and understand. And then it's not really an exception, it's just, yeah, they can meet those conditions and do it.
Right.
Right, you can still have a P with conditions, right?
Right.
Right, it, it doesn't, I don't think there's a prohibition.
So what?
Housing component?
I'm just, can I say something here? I was just looking at the goals, objectives and policies for housing. That we approved and were approved. In the, uh. Policies, there's a, there's a lot of verbiage in there about cluster, oh, there we go. Um, oh no, I'm saying there we go, cause I just pulled it up on my computer. Anyway, there's, you know, it talks about a, uh, a variety of housing options, we talk about. Planning solutions for all types of housing projects, we talk about clustering, we talk about assisted living group shelters. And then number five is enable workforce housing in direct proximity to agriculture, commercial and industrial uses. So I think we address a lot of what you're talking about in our goals, objectives and policies. Maybe not enough for you guys, but looks like a lot of it to me.
I think that's a good point, I mean, because, like, number five, okay, there's the basis of a policy. So then.
Right.
You and the commission and the county as a whole, the commissioners and the staff. Have to take that and, and mature it. How do we?
Right.
Implement this policy, what do we do with it? Let's change the zoning code to save this, that we're talking about, about these duplexes or, or multiplexes for workforce housing. How's it gonna fit, so?
Yeah, I don't. This conversation started with that paragraph about the. The correlation between income and, and cost of housing, I think. But anyway, I, I think. I, I was for getting rid of that paragraph, like you were, Don, you'd crossed it out. To me, these policies cover a lot of the options.
So there still could be a, a good, well-written paragraph. To talk about this. Uh, there is a disparity, there's a growing disparity between income and, and affordability of housing. But, and. Unlike urban area where they have public housing authorities that. Buy land and build houses for specific income groups. That probably isn't gonna happen in the unincorporated county. Uh, there's very few examples of it in Bonner County, and there's very few around the state that I'm aware. So anyway.
You're gonna add some verbiage in here about?
Yeah, in place of that, that start of paragraph.
So I agree with that completely, I mean, cause I think these components need to provide the support for those policies.
Absolutely, right, that's always been the, the driver there, um, we, we. Thought we did good work on that, so let's, let's. Prove the language now to support those, that, that sense, but, you know, back engineering.
Yeah.
Um, but. So anyway, I'll, I'll, I'll work on that.
What happens, housing needs, um. There's some paragraphs in here that need updating.
Yes.
Are you gonna tackle that, Swati?
Yeah, let's look at them though, cause I need some direction to think, there was one thing in there, I was asking for everybody's opinion or whatever.
Well, you got this BBC assessment, which. So, but then you. You think are still valid.
The two thousand fifteen work. Sites a two thousand seven BBC study. Which. Many of the findings in that study are still valid. But there's some that are not. And then there's the fair housing component or the talk from there, and it came up with these seven or eight criteria that they weigh things on. And the, and the staff responded to those, saying, well, Bonner County Code does this. Well, plus these, these nice little jigsaw puzzles. I don't know that they. That, that's on Dave's line, it's a picture that shows a thousand words. Uh, it's probably not bad, but. I don't even know how to get in there.
I'd like to suggest in, under the housing. I lost it. Page twenty-four-ish.
Of course, yeah, these things rotate as you change words, so.
Uh, here we go. Under homeowner rent costs as percentage of income, like to change that, oh, yeah, friend, to, uh, what we, review the. Uh, implementation goals, their policies. Uh, implementation goals or policies for consistency or.
Well, yeah, right, so we don't, so we know for progress here for the next time we come back. That we should be looking at that and then coming up with ideas, hoping to go into the firm or. So if you put a note on that, just to um, uh, and. Yeah, just add language that is consistent with the goals established, already established. Because I think there's consensus here that we don't delete it, that we should deal with. Needs to be covered, right.
I agree, it needs to be covered, yep.
But does it need to be covered under the heading homeowner and rent costs as percentage of income?
Oh, I don't, I don't know, we, we need to come back to it, maybe it's under the, still under the affordability. Affordable housing, so I'll look at that, I'll look at that, to make sure that there's something in the title that's pertinent.
Okay.
Some people react to affordable because it has connotations. It's into government programs, which is not what we're.
It's, it's lost its meaning that it had twenty, thirty years ago.
So, I, I do know from a, a large agricultural base. They've changed their whole mindset of thinking that they can no longer just have workers for one seasonal crop.
Right.
And they've diversified to have year-round crops, where you, you know, you fix your equipment and whatnot, but then they've also. Through government programs and through their own uh, means of providing their workforce adequate housing. So they consistently stay there.
Yeah.
Versus getting a new guy.
You have the same.
Whole, whole dynamic of seasonal labor.
Which is something that this community, I think, is. I don't know that it's experiencing that necessarily, but in the disparity between a, a housing cost rising in.
Yeah.
Income, not keeping up with that is.
Daily is seasonal, seasonal workforce housing in the recreation. Is where the, the pressure is here. Um, you know, because you don't have seasonal workers at Quest or seasonal workers at Lighthouse or. They're full-time, but they're, they're not high-income or they don't have any coming up to afford a six hundred thousand dollar home either.
So let's, let's, let's try to keep going here, so.
Yep.
But housing needs, I think, were talking about that.
Yeah, okay, so that's the next one down, is housing needs. Whether this BBC assessment is.
Yeah.
Something that we should. So now, I mean, that's the question, like I said, if you took those bullets, and I just. Maybe that's what those comments are, ooh, there are comments already stated, right? That's what those balloons are, oh, look at that. Some of the findings still relevant, some are way off, such as the third, fifth, and sixth boards. So, what, what you do is somebody's report, can't refute the report, it's, it's dated, that's all. So. Is there, is there a, do I scrap some of the bullets that are no longer pertinent, or?
Isn't there a?
I, I guess the question I might go to is, is there a more, a more recent analysis?
Right, that was the thing, so.
Bonner County Housing Authority or something like that.
There have been a, a number of attempts to identify housing needs over the last ten years. Um, some of them are, this one's, this is the oldest one, two thousand seven, but the staff at the time felt that it was still quite pertinent, page down a little. If you would, and it talks about, uh, what's that one about there? Oh, it talks about the findings, but it's still based on the, on the BBC Research and Consulting two thousand seven study. So further down, there's a, there's another one that. Okay, yes, the housing assessment that was done by, I forget, it wasn't, it wasn't BBC, I don't think.
By University of Idaho, University by BBC together.
And that, right, and that was done a little later, not terribly later, but. This task force, Bonner County Housing Task Force, I've seen, read up there, I said it was created in twenty or something. I don't know, I had to find the number, but over and over again, so what does that comment say in the box? Just the housing assessment was finding that, finding was that the extending water and sewer could remove a barrier to affordable housing. But, and this was answering Mike's question from the other document, there are sewer and water districts in the unincorporated county, however. As we've heard from all of them, when we did the, the uh, public utilities, none of them are capable of expanding. At their present, just their, their lagoons are set, their piping is set, their costs are set. I don't think any of them acknowledge that they could expand on new members.
I mean, well, Southside Water and Sewer though.
Now, now they're just getting into that, but all the ones up around Priest Lake are all set, um. Uh, Southside is probably the only one that's going to have capability to expand. And even then, I've got to see the numbers, because I, I know that EPA told them their lagoons are failing, they're not effective. Six months out of the year, you've got to either provide more, so it may just be ketchup. I don't know.
Yeah, we can add amenities with them, um, my brother and I, uh, they're gonna increase their capacity from. Four hundred and change to eight hundred something.
Oh, wow.
Yeah, they're, they're, they're doubling their lagoons down, down on Lakeshore. And they're also doubling. Land upside and additional ponds, so, but they don't really anticipate, they're gonna see how it goes. Because they have such a vast district already, but you know, you know, as I'm looking at their district, I pulled this up for the day. There's some large forty-eagles parcels, and now there is zone row five, it's in their water and sewer district, right? That, it just makes to me a no-brainer, uh, maybe that should be zones for, or is there going to be some talk? I'm sure there has been, there hasn't been for years, combining. Uh, Sagel Valley Water Sewer with, with Southside, because it's right there.
Right.
Because they got the facility right there, and it would make sense. The original plan that, that created Sagel Valley Water, Sagel Valley Estates. Their system has failed time and time again, now every one of those lots has a drain field on it, it's crazy.
Let's try to focus not any of those, so, and so I think, I think your points here are that, you know, that. Density is really dependent on, on urban services, that's really what you're talking about.
That was the gist of it, and, and that was explained, let's see. The red is what I added, I can't even see the color anymore. Yeah, that's actually the Idaho code. That's what I added. But, again, the question is, with all these recited old studies and stuff. The language that was there in the document in two thousand fifteen was a recitation of what they said, you don't refute that, maybe update it. But do I even keep it? Is it pertinent to keep that stuff?
I think it is pertinent, and here's why, it, it is because a lot of their study is, is, is housing. And we're seeing that gap widen so much, it was bad when they, when they done their reports, so now it's just.
It's.
It's bigger. So again, it's, it's painting the picture, laying the trail, putting down the papers. To make conclusions that we got a big gap here that needs to be as best we can. Southern County Unincorporated Area, RPRC, BRCRC needs to address this.
So who is the Bonner County Task Force, and is it currently active?
I don't know, I couldn't find it.
Uh, because I think some of the things that I used to experience in government was they'd make these. And it would disappear and, uh.
I, I couldn't find a date that they were created, or are they still in existence?
So what I was saying is if they aren't in existence, it seems like to me we should be uh, asking them.
Yeah.
Are these some points that were written down back in forever?
Yep.
Uh, still valid, or is this all mute now?
Unfortunately, I tried over the last month to contact every one of these agencies, I can't. Well, they're not back till March fifteenth, they're not back till the end of April, they're in Florida, they're, they're someplace else to join the.
It would seem to me that staff could tell you that there is a Bonner County.
Uh, I know, I know there is, but get a hold of them to ask the question.
Well, I, you know, I think, I think some of this data, I mean, some of this uh. Language is, is, is probably still accurate.
Right, that's what I said, it's.
You know, you can't, we can't leave in this thing, uh, two thousand five data, two thousand seven data, we just can't, we'll get crucified. So we either, we either update it or we eliminate this.
Yeah, so that's what I'm wondering, one, you know, my like, like Mark, like saying, have they done recent work? After this was cited for the two thousand fifteen update, possibly so. Uh, we get into that with the discussion about habitat re-management.
Just can't have. That's stated.
You know, unless, unless it's, it's there with all of data, well, that was a two thousand seven, two thousand twelve, it was this, two thousand eighteen, it was this, to show a trend.
Well, my point, Alan, is these were actions that were declared back in fifteen, did you say?
Most of these were thirteen or before.
Okay, so if they haven't been acted upon, or they haven't really got very far, why would we leave these in? What, as, as this way, unless, uh. You know, and again, these documents are so encompassing, I, I don't know how commissioners can.
Mission.
I don't need to do their job, because these things are, are unmanageable.
Yes, well, yes and no, I mean, I, I think they, they gave uh, some recommendations in there, and some have been.
In, incorporated.
Well, you know, like it says. Implement, uh, implement employer-assisted or sponsored housing opportunities, okay. Bonner County Code Title twelve allows for such housing opportunity, it does, so. If you acknowledge it, or you, you just.
I, I mean, so my question is, like, ten years ago, it said create a workforce housing village. Has that been done? If not, why, and if, if not, and we know the why, why wouldn't we leave it in here?
But again, that was a recommendation from this agency, it wasn't the company saying.
But isn't this our land use?
Well, true, I mean, it's just citing a report that was done as an example or as, as some indication, it was not. It, it wasn't acted on.
You know, I, I'm just simply saying, if we're not going to be able to do this, or the, or county government's not going to be able to do these things, like, don't put it in there.
Well, I, I, I think a lot of the county can, but what happened was this element came well after two thousand eight, so. And so we, some of these, some of these, uh. You know, when I've been hearing, we're hearing those files on the zoning commission. Some of these comments were taken right out of this housing element and utilized for to get CUPs and.
Yes.
At the very end, separate zone change, and so they are being organized.
That's a presentation that wasn't.
That's true, true.
It's the, it's.
And if, if those things are being used inappropriately in CUP cases and zone change cases, then we need to get them out of there as quick as possible.
Alright, so, I think to use your example. Uh, maybe more relevant question, it says create a workforce housing village, well, could we still think that that's a good aspiration? Or do we think now, with the benefit of hindsight, that maybe that's not a good idea?
Or maybe it was done and we don't need to do it.
Well, in that case, I don't think it was.
But it'll house for that kind of housing opportunity.
Well.
What they call that.
So again, you know.
That's different to me than.
And, and then you call housing village.
I don't know, I don't know, I'm reading between the lines of what they wrote there.
Yeah.
But, but yes, the county allows for that, but, but, and from a planning perspective, that sounds to me like they were suggesting actually. Create an area.
Absolutely.
Here in the county.
Read this, this very short, concise sentence.
This is. Obviously, the county isn't going to go.
No, and again, this was a recommendation, a liberty from the housing task force in two thousand. Always been an issue, it's been an issue since the mills, what do the mills do? Sandpoint, City of Sandpoint is.
Workforce housing.
That's what all those mill houses are from. No more building, but the houses are still there.
And well, what do we say, say to uh. Encourage workforce housing, something like that.
Because, because a lot of the, the things that were said in this citation are still relevant. Boil it down, maybe even make it into a sentence, past efforts have said, things like, um. Uh, encourage a regional planning effort, uh, inventory of the parcels and so forth, and, and, you know, boil it down to a paragraph rather than. That seven points, and say, these are still relevant, and county code has in the past. Uh, made, made some accommodation for these, but it still needs more work and put that down somewhere.
Well, I, I like your idea, so rather than have them seven. Boil it down to four, get two or three or four of them done, and let's pay, figure out ourselves. Maybe what are the top three or four in this? So we can actually get something done.
Right.
So you've got implement layer housing, layer assisted or sponsored housing opportunities, you could rework that. I think the rest of it, common tools, all that stuff is probably not that necessary.
Yeah.
But they implement employer system, I mean, that's exactly what Hills did.
Exactly what Hills did.
Right. And, you know, millions is doing the same thing.
Yep.
And is the county really gonna, this is a county document, so is the county really gonna create a workforce village?
Again, that was.
End up in a policy, that's gonna say, yes, sounds just as far that we can do.
Well, and if not, maybe we can have the next year. Rather than create a workforce housing village, we could say, no, uh, like Dave said, enable workforce housing.
Identify areas for.
Right.
Appropriate for workforce housing.
I could, I guess, very similar, but, but that's kind of goes with the implement player assisted sponsored housing opportunities. That's, that is what's happened in Priest Lake, is that because they have such a, a problem with uh. Getting some help that can afford to live, and, and they need to have workforce housing. It's actually, you're actually doing it, right, it's just where, that's how our community, or. That last community that solved this problem was because it needed a dependable workforce.
Right.
And that was the way they solved it, the housing. Alright, so I, I think we could rework that.
Well, I, I'm thinking, there's two or three citations of other studies that were done. Someone acknowledged that that was done, and fa, and the factors have not changed a whole lot.
But you can say that without actually using their.
Exactly, exactly, that's, that's, boiling down to say.
That's, we just can't use.
No, no, I mean, and it just, it, it, right, because it even says, look at that, it says create workforce housing, have you done that, county? Just like Mike said, no, that wasn't the county's word, that was the housing task force's word. So get out from under that blanket and put it under ours and say, these things have been said in the past, these have been brought up time and time again, tells me.
Therefore, the conclusion is, yeah, we need to make, the county code needs to make some provision for workforce housing.
Let's move on, how about housing programs? Next meeting, well, I think, I think we need to kind of go through. When it should be updated. Let's go through those, maybe quickly.
There is a Bonner County.
Sandpoint, I read something in the paper about Sandpoint creating a housing authority. Alright, we're back from a break and we're gonna talk about housing programs. We need this. This needs to be updated.
So there's. Looking at it. A little critically. Are all the housing programs listed? Relevant? And adding like what? Matt said USDA rural development. Their programs, I don't think it's in here.
Well, that is, all this information that's here is. Twenty fourteen data, right?
Right.
And that it needs to be. Well, if we're gonna include it, it needs to be current.
I I I'm getting down to that section now. On the.
So let's do this, so let's um. I think it needs to be included, uh and and it just needs to be updated, so. What I'd like to do is go through the the balance of them and. I know you have some questions on about whether they should be included or not. Maybe we can do that because, you know. I I think they all need to be updated to some degree. The next one is Habitat for Humanity, is that something we actually should have?
I don't think so. They get one house a year, they've done, and they've had, I think, two houses in the incorporated part of the county. Most of them have been on a subdivision, I think I did ponder eight. Or Cooney rather. But I don't think it's pertinent.
Yeah, unless somebody has a real strong feeling about it, I I don't think we need to have this.
I agree.
Alright, so Bonner County Housing Agents.
If I can get a hold of them.
Okay, so that's worthwhile, getting updated, yeah.
They have a nice website.
Yeah.
I just looked them up.
Finally got a hold of a gal. Two weeks ago, we said, oh, you need to talk to so and so, and he won't be back until April twentieth. He's in. In Arizona.
Homelessness homelessness in Bonner County, so that's a problem. Does Bonner County still have a homeless task force?
I think so.
But I guess we would consult with them or talk to them before. We would decide. To modify or. Do whatever with this section. Because apparently they're the ones that have.
And so far, most of this. Most of this section deals with statewide. Oh, I can't even see.
Well, it mentions Bonner Gospel Mission in there too.
Now, you got you got here in Tressel Creek and Blue Haven Shelters in Biker.
Tressel Creek, yes, they're they're operated under conditioning, as per their on Tressel Creek Road. They're a limited facility, I think they could have. Eighteen twelve individuals out there, Blue Haven is within City of Sandpoint. Uh so again, this is a. It's a statement, but the the. Surely have all these bed nights and all that stuff, but.
Have they, have they, are there any more than?
Nope.
So they haven't been, haven't created any new shelters since twenty fourteen?
No.
No, I don't know about Priest River Ministries that uh. Is that there, still exists?
It is, but they don't deal with. I don't think they have any. Any unincorporated county. These are the side of mine houses that they can. Either purchase or rent or make an agreement with an owner that they'll use them. For housing, temporary housing. But. They're, in the scheme of things, they're municipal.
Look, if it isn't, okay, so you're gonna take it out.
I'll contact Priest River Ministries and see.
That would be appreciated, then that. Next time we decide whether to leave it or not. Same thing with uh Bonner Gospel Mission. Oh, that's a ponderate, so why do we care?
They're twenty guys over there.
Okay, so then, here we here we get the housing affordability, which is, you know, we've been talking about this and other. Connect with other sections.
Right.
Uh so obviously it needs to be updated.
Yeah. I've struck out that one paragraph that just.
That's all struck out.
Yeah. Yeah, because. The numbers are cold and weird and whatever. Unless you see something in there and somebody. Oh, that uh. Some of this, like that one paragraph there, as the gap between ranges of housing in many communities has widened, the problem with affordable housing has been. Da 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 da, that's from a two thousand eight University of Iowa study.
Well, that paragraph's not wrong. I bet you University of Idaho has updated information.
I would hope so, but I did a rapid quick search the other day and. I looked in there.
This is, this is something we can state ourselves, we don't have to rely on other agencies to state this. Okay. It's something that.
That's a conclusion statement. That they made. After looking into data, well, we've been depending, we can come to the same conclusion.
Right, so then we're gonna rewrite this.
And all this Bonner County, you're under D and so what. Sorry.
This is from Safe Sanitary Adequate Housing Building Regulation.
No, and it stated right at the front, but then there's all this. These bullets and everything and. Um. I don't. I didn't even make a note on that one, I guess I didn't get that part down.
So can I go back to housing affordability, I mean, I just. Lay it out here on the table, is that really a function of county government? Or or a responsibility? Uh. County government, I don't uh. Knows the cost of housing. Versus. Uh employment.
So it can be similarly handled the way I handled it up above, but in a different context.
Okay, so we're we're gonna.
Um, you know, county code is not gonna say.
We all feel hurt for this, I wish it were. Different, but that's really not something I don't believe county government can.
I agree wholeheartedly, I've lived in a lot of resort communities, this is the constant. Dynamic. And I don't think it's up to the county to solve a- any of these problems, other than to, like we talked about above. Enable. High density housing. Or enable for the opportunity for high density housing. But you start talking about income and wage and housing inequity. That's not the, that's not, in my belief, that's not government's business at all.
If anything, all of that leads to that one paragraph that's now highlighted on the screen, the gap between wages and housing prices. That's the best indicator that.
Yeah, but I think I I think if you look historically, and if we were ten years ago, people would probably say the same thing. You know, people, people who complain about it now. Have been here for twenty thirty years, if they bought their house twenty thirty years ago, would they be saying it now? But they were saying it twenty years ago, so it seems to be a constant, I'm just very uncomfortable with how much we've got this in this component. This dynamic.
I am too. Well, I'm too, I think we could. I'm gonna take a look at that, you know, like of all these bits and pieces. And I boil it down to a couple paragraphs or a page even. To set the the stage. All the factors show, blah blah blah, all the factors show. And therefore, you know, the the code needs to make some provision for adequate housing. Or or adequate housing, like we've got in the in already in the goal. So in that sense, it's a bit of re backwards engineering, the language to fit the the goal, but. It's not wrong. The goal is correct. You know.
Right, and so that's why I don't think it's backwards, I think we did a really good job on the goals, and I think we look at that goal, I mean, so far. I've kind of lost count, but it seems like we've talked about this dynamic now in two or three different places in this component. Let's just do one little paragraph about it, but bottom line. The 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 county has absolutely nothing to do with housing prices and nothing to do with wages, and never should they.
I I. I don't want to interrupt your.
You don't want my argument?
No, no, I don't want to interrupt you.
Oh, okay.
No, what I was gonna say is, you know, the whole purpose that we're sitting here is because we're granted this authority through Loop of sixty seven to sixty five. The first statement, the purpose statement. Is that we are charged with it, the purpose of this act is to is to promote health, safety and general welfare for the people of the state of Idaho, as follows. Protect property rights while making accommodations for other necessary types of developments such as low cost housing and mobile home parks. Mobile home parks, we are in dire need of more mobile home parks. But who wants it? Everybody says NIMBY, not in my backyard, not a sewer one of those suburbs I was wanting to address it, and we're stuck with it, so when we say can't, we we can't address it. We certainly can, we need to start looking at where that should go. Now, the first thing everybody says is why it has to be in the incorporated areas, or it needs to be within a sewer district. Now, it's so, not not one of those four trailer parks and mobile home parks and several are on community sewer systems. So they're. Individual septic tanks.
Each mobile home?
Yes.
On on its own separate?
Yes. They have a community. Have an immunity leaf built.
Community drain.
Septic tanks.
But that's what's labeled down.
Yeah, and and in two thousand eight. South Central Water Sewer got ahead and hired J U B, go ahead and do our study, they they tested hundreds of wells out there to verify that they have no nitrate. Loading and handling those wells, and guess what, everything was fine. And those mobile home parks have been there for forty, forty years.
Plus years.
So I cannot be told that you have to have it on the community sewer system. Maybe a little less density instead of having four mobile homes per acre, maybe two or three or something like that, but I believe it is capable. So you want to sit under housing affordability, permit more mobile parks, we're we're charged, it's right there in state law. Right in there to the home, so. Yeah, the ground. Under natural resources and the soil section, natural resources, over and over again, existing compliance and read base, but S R C, N R C S. You, so conservation service did years ago saying, there's only twenty eight percent of the soils in Bonner County are suitable for septic systems. But where's that twenty eight percent? We should find that. Or is, you know, where by by septic, by Panhandle Health District. Data. We should find the areas that are suitable. And when we get to the mapping.
Yes.
At the designations. Put a designation in there for that, and then an area and and see how it flows, I mean, that's what this is aiming.
Yeah.
And it may not be, you know, ten thousand acres of of ground, it's gonna be a few hundred at most. But the permission needs to be, and that's how the county would make provision for it.
So I didn't think Deb and myself were advocating to strike. Housing affordability as part of this.
Yeah, I mean, it's. There was something else in there.
I don't mind the idea of advocating for quote unquote affordable housing, which usually is synonymous with high density. Which like he's, like one of you said. It seems to be a not in my backyard problem, but it just seems like we've been addressing it off and on here for the last hour. It seems like it keeps coming up, so should it just be in one place? In this component, or should it be? Scattered around, which it seems like to me it has been. Coming up again here.
I agree with you, Debbie, the the, it seems like this component could be tightened up quite a bit and still get the point across.
Right.
One one point I would make, I I think I said it. Last time we talked about the housing element, but there there is a dimension that. You know, it does have an impact. On housing affordability, and that is. And to the extent that Title Twelve, those regulations. Impact supply of housing, they they they, those regulations can either make it easier to build more housing, or more difficult to build more housing. And that has an impact on the on the cost of housing. I agree completely, we aren't gonna to address. Wages, pay, uh you know, some of it, no, we're not gonna force people to build cheap houses. If 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 the people who are doing real estate development decide that they think the most attractive market for them is to build. Nice expensive homes, that's what they're gonna build, and the county isn't gonna have any say so in that. But through. Twelve, we we can have an impact on supply. I mean, to Matt's point about the the mobile homes, we make it, we make it difficult to build mobile home parks now, we can make it easier to build mobile home parks.
We are mobile home parks. Conditionally permitted in any zone. See, that's my point, is is.
I think just one.
There's there's one?
Just one.
Just our five?
Just one zone.
Probably suburban. Yeah, we measure be suburban. Right, yeah.
Well, let's keep going, because I think. Um, we we get onto the fair housing, I think there's some language about. Real service.
Foundationally permitted.
Okay. Cause it's interesting, because in one of the BBC recommendations, we're gonna go ahead and allow. Uh commercial uses, right, these mobile home and RV parks in residential or residential zones. So that's one way that we.
Yeah.
They suggested, but it was.
Yeah, so there it is. Well, if you go down to the end here, fair housing compliance. Says here, and this is shown in talks below is. Summary of current Bonner County regulations related to fair house analysis, and it does. Should be one zone that has small lots. Uh there should be one, at least one zoning district that should allow to multi-family. In rural counties, these multi-family lots may be close to blah blah blah. Manufactured, manufactured housing meeting. Uh hug, safety standards should be allowed somewhere in the jurisdiction, allowing them to mobile. Home parks is a common practice, but at least one residential zone should permit manufactured homes.
And the response of Bonner County was.
Like you could allow that everywhere.
Read the, read the. Read the, read the.
Yeah.
Building regulations, blah, blah, blah. That was the county's response back to these suggestions based by the fair housing analysis.
Bonner County building regulations require manufacturing to meet HUD safety requirements. And manufactured housing are permitted wherever single-family residential home is permitted, so there you go.
So, so my question on that is, do we keep that the way it's written? They're all correct, and they were correct at the time, and they still remain correct. But it's based on the, what, two thousand and eight study here, again, the fair housing analysis, if you and I did.
Has it changed?
Well, that's it, because this is a statement, this is still valid.
But what these, what these different paragraphs are is how Bonner County um, responded to that.
Right.
And I assume that this is still current, right?
I I I looked at them, and I don't see any that are out of date in that respect.
So if it's all still accurate, then why would you change? I think that's.
Because.
Some of the things we're talking about right now, but.
Yes.
Whether there should be zones for manufactured housing, all that kind of stuff, so. Think, I think it's there.
Forum.
Like, going back to having started this, I think that you can't take out for housing affordability.
Yeah.
S- section. As we deal with it later. Then we have provisions for safe sanitary adequate housing. I I I've looked through this. I don't I don't see that any of this needs to be changed.
I think I made a comment or I left a comment under the, under the fair housing compliance.
I am, but that's, that's. Everybody agreed that um, under the heading provisions for safe sanitary adequate housing. I don't think it needs to be changed. Good job.
Done. Yeah. So the fair housing compliance, that's a federal act. We're good, Title eight, ninety-sixty-eight Civil Rights Act. Like I said in my comment, that was mainly put in place to control housing developments in the cities that would be in torn apart and and a fair market and rent controls and all that kind of stuff. Doesn't apply to Bonner County, and then further not. Uh. Is this something that the county gets reviewed periodically for compliance? And Bonner County does? I don't know.
I don't believe it's.
I have no idea. Somehow it 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 came up on the radar back in two thousand and thirteen when they were putting this together. And there's no, there's no indication that that Bonner County government must comply with this act.
Apparently, Bonner County did. I think all we need to do here is is to make sure that these statements are small lots.
Are still correct.
Parcels are correct. I mean, if the code still is still consistent, this, then we just leave.
Yeah, there's one we did. Under so small lots of the sixty-four soil units, Bonner County only three are ra- are rated favorable for subs- for subsurface sewage disposal units. Three. So we got to find where they are, capitalize on those three areas.
So it really depends on whether we get funding from HUD or not.
Right.
If we don't get. So we don't need to.
And and the county does not.
County does.
County does not get HUD funding. Those are through specific agencies. Like rural development, rural USDA rural development gets HUD money up the.
Okay, so.
So I don't know how pertinent it is. Again, somebody's going to say, look, the housing, fair housing actually don't do this, so we're good.
What if it's fair housing compliant section? As long as we understand that something hasn't changed since this was written.
Yeah, that's the thing. I I hesitate because it has these dates in it, two thousand and five, two thousand.
Well, that's, that's one of them. That's a statute. That's a, yeah, that's.
See that citation right there? County is further constrained by poor soils. That came, that's Bonner County information from two thousand and five. I don't know what source it's. Two thousand and five? Somebody's going to say, what, that, what's it? Just go through the dates, little data.
Well, so I would
take it out.
I would take that, the whole statement out, at at least until we confirm its accuracy.
Yeah.
So that's all, I mean, it's a bit that's mind-blowing almost that there's only three.
See, something similar cited time and time again in soils in the county.
But it, but but we obviously, I mean, I I'm guessing there's tons of septic systems that aren't one of those three soils.
That's not being a meaningful limitation. For your backyard, my backyard, I don't think we're in one of those.
All right, so let's take that sentence out. The last ten, so, you know, small.
County is further constrained. From there down.
You know, I mean, that's.
Yeah, yeah, yeah.
That's not an invalid statement, but then the quantification of it is only three.
So what?
Yeah, I don't know that, I don't know how constrained.
Well, the thing is, even
besides that, this is not, this is not what we do anyway. I mean, this, this has to do.
All right, that, the sentence about it, lack of available water and sewer systems, meaning we're supposed to provide a lack, that means you're you're in arrears. There's not, there's all kinds of factors that go into providing public and water and sewer, all kinds of, most of them financial. Except there are small districts that were done for subdivisions mainly.
And they were paid for by the people.
They needed to pay for it. They're not, they're not.
City, cities do right now. They put in their water in the sewer, but the property buyer, owner pays for courses, so it's a hook.
Take out the last two sentences.
There you go.
Yeah. All right. Very good.
I mean, small, it does connect with small water.
It's an extension, extension, extension.
Okay, any other cases to delete any of these?
I I'm just noticing where it says these multi-family lots may be close to incorporated or urbanized areas. Is that at all in contradiction to our policy? The one that says, that talks about direct proximity to agriculture, commercial, or industrial, or is uh, are we happy with both of those sentences? Or am I getting too detail-oriented there?
Since all the, all the certain, at least one zoning district should well help her construction.
Yes, was their suggestion, so I'm I'm really.
Okay.
I like these, in in rural counties, these multi-family lots may be close to incorporated urbanized areas. That's what LUPA says.
Okay.
So they didn't even review LUPA before they wrote these.
County response to that is current county codes can just make permit multi-family housing in five different zoning districts.
Yeah, so I mean, you got to cover. It's, yes.
We got manufactured housing.
Should be somewhat allowed, somewhere allowed in the jurisdiction. Along them, mobile home parks is a common practice, but at least one residential zone should prevent manufactured homes, meaning outright. And again, this is their suggestion. There's no, uh, we don't have the whole study to look at. What's, what's our basis? And what did they review? Are they from Idaho? You know?
Well, and I think we do, even I, I believe it's actually an Idaho statute that manufactured homes pretty much can go any place unless.
Right.
CC.
As long, as as long as it meets type requirement.
Yes. Anybody recognize that apartment building?
Oh, wait a minute. Anybody recognize it? I don't. Get that thing out of there. It's not a Bonner County housing.
I, is, no, 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 wait, isn't that condo del Sol?
No.
You sure?
Those kind of entries, no. In twenty fifteen.
Actually, yes, they do.
Ah, they do upstairs. Well, I do, but. It's not from here. Why keep it? I don't want to see some palm trees showing up in a picture of Bonner County.
I think, I think that's condo del Sol.
Hang it out, it doesn't. What's, all right, you got, I'll check it, Debbie. I'll I'll drive by there and take a look.
Put two buses parked next to you. That under the mobile home section, I I know right where to go, get some pictures of those ten.
Uh, it's multi-family, so we need a multi-family. The Bonner County is good, incorporated Bonner County multiple family. I know there's some nuances on things in there.
All all we need to do is make sure that the paralysis language is correct.
Is correct.
That should be out of the brackets. Maybe that language that we have of Bonner County should be out of brackets.
Well, in italics and out of brackets, yeah, I mean. Well, it makes it look like it's part of the recommendation, though, if you don't put it in italics or brackets or something.
I think it's pretty clear.
And it it needs to be separated from, because it's the response.
But it kind of, when you put it in brackets, it makes it feel like it's some sort of a reference to to the, to the language before that.
So you want to have it all in brackets rather than parentheses?
Maybe just like sort of a response. Another one.
Yeah, some subset of, there you go. A different end of on a bullet.
Okay, yeah, that's.
And I I I'm going to take a look at it to see the responses, I think, should be consistent. Just like that, current county code conditionally prevents, or current county code allows, current county code. Put it all in the same context, because some of them are written differently.
Wait, can we get to this picture?
Okay, yeah, the pictures are are bugging me. I can take all the pictures out. I do.
Take them out.
Yeah, I mean. They're just taking up space.
I don't think they have anything.
No. Everybody knows what a multi.
About this sentence right here.
Where are we at?
Uh, at the end of the fair housing thing.
All the way to the bottom, next page down a little under what makes use or.
Well, maybe, okay, but you go here. It starts with, oh, really, it's not the last paragraph. It starts with all counties at that paragraph.
All counties could approve.
Okay. That's, that's on BBC research. Why don't we just take ours out? Why do we need it?
What page are we on there?
Uh, page.
Four, okay.
Uh, I would take out.
Yeah, so their their recommendation based on something they did in two thousand and eight.
I would delete it. From all counties.
Now, their suggestions again, fine, thank you very much. Set of suggestions.
Based on. Report found a lot sizes.
Like, look at age forty. Including. So that one said incentives, keep going down, keep going down. Right, right there. Well, there was always.
Bonner County.
Cottage housing, okay, there is. Yeah, that that, right, the language is consistent to Bonner County.
Okay, how is the trends and projections? Update with NLS data. Are we going to do that?
I I'm suggesting eliminate all of that section.
Haven't we done that?
Except for.
It seems like it's part of the issue.
And issues. I I would just title that whole section, housing issues. And everything above the issues, which is on page forty-six, between between issues and, I mean, I, first of all, it's old information. Uh, it's using a realty firm. It's pretty problematic to me. Well, that was going to be replaced by the present data that Matt provided, so. Like I said, update with NLS data. Um.
I I.
Didn't we talk about that upfront?
Prices problems.
If if this is supposed to, and I I agree with the header, you now need to do trends and projections. Where are we going? What does this indicate? Because that implies conclusions. Where are we going? What does the data tell us?
Don't you have that in your issues?
Yes. Well, I don't know. Just go down to issues.
Just say housing issues and list the issues there. Modify those maybe.
There's another picture of something. That's another one comparing counties. I love that graph.
It's a picture of the cell. It's pretty like, oh, these issues all agree.
Yeah.
Well, they need to be updated and they need to be worked. I don't know, is housing, is heating sources of fuel costs, is that an issue?
No, 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 unless you got a gas stove.
Housing. I don't even know what this means. Housing in Manhattan areas including wildland and urban space and floodplains.
Well, they're they're. Yeah, and it talked about up above the fire that's in your tank. Issues, all right. And I haven't, frankly, I haven't even got to here yet.
All right, so let's take out the section above that.
But this was to boil it down. I I like the intent of it. But.
All right, well, if you can work it, so then it makes sense.
See, because Matt provided the numbers right there, median sold land prices, got that. We've got the housing, but again, we we put some of that in. Part of it is in the summary, the the overview of housing. But here's the details down here. So I I I can work with that.
All right.
If you want to leave it in, I mean, I don't.
Why don't you work with it, but then, but the whole thing is completely realized.
Dated and, yeah, it doesn't need to have all the way from two thousand and three, one day.
But it needs to come up to current.
Oh, yes. Of course. I would never use something that old in the document.
And we all know which way the that blue line is going to go.
And it doesn't even have to have the green and the and the red line.
You know, that's true, too. We don't need.
All right.
Issues, so. Issues.
I want to change it. Pretty slick on one side, wandering on the other.
Rising median home values, values of homes, I can take out the numbers. Still, I guess, an issue.
Yeah, it's still an issue.
Rising ratios of rent, mortgage cost of income, yeah, aging population, yeah.
But we didn't, we didn't detail the mortgage costs relative to income.
So the question is, do we need to?
It's a factor. I mean, all these issues together.
I know, but do we need, we're making observations and making a summary statement here, saying this is an issue of.
And then.
Rising inflation goes to rent. Mortgage.
Yes.
So what's government going to do about that?
Here, indicators of a problem. Indicators of supply and demand. We're on the, we're on the supply side of the equation. They're on the demand side. Well, whatever we do that affects the supply is supposedly going to help out the demand.
Okay.
So these are all indicators of the demand.
Because there's something that I think.
Yes, that we should need to go through.
We should probably, so we have not, we have not substantiated the problem of homelessness.
No.
I mean, I'm I'm not sure if we have a problem, maybe we do, maybe we don't, but we we haven't built that case.
It's not. I mean, there's, there's homeless people out there now because they can't find a place while they're working in town, so they're homeless, living in the car, living in the tent, whatever. So that's an element of it, but I don't know how far you want to go down that trip.
Well, we haven't, my opinion is, I don't think we.
You can't substantiate other than anecdotal information.
So so take it out.
Yeah.
My opinion.
Right.
We haven't, we haven't built the case that foreclosures and employment numbers is a problem.
I, no. Did we decide the section above that dealt with rents and mortgages? We scrapped that, didn't we?
No, I think we're leaving that. Well, I think. We got those statistics.
Yeah, yeah, in the population section, we definitely show that we have an aging population.
Okay.
And I I think that does.
So I need to go into the population and drag something out and then make a citation.
Well, I think when it refers to it, protecting.
Not in the generality, so it's not in the state, there's stuff in your daughter. But maybe it's a site, you know, as shown in the population component of this plan. I mean, I, that's, that's something we need to do all across the board, is draw together, put the strings in place to say, from this component, we learned this, from this component, we learned.
Well, you just say right at the top, the the all this information is a result of.
Okay.
It procluded employment numbers, I don't think we know, so.
Heating sources and fuel costs, they don't come out. I'm not sure what the point of the second homes in Bonner County is. There, yes, there are, a lot of people who have second homes in Bonner County, but is that an issue?
It affects, from the standpoint that that house might be on the market for somebody to buy.
No, they have lots of contacts here. This is the, a second homes effect on services, economy, and affordability.
Well, um, second homes are, I mean, I've, I've heard the argument from people. There's so many people here that have summer homes that those could be available for workforce housing uh, over and over again.
Uh, it's, people do.
It's true.
All right, I mean, I, and I think you can make the argument, actually, that they pay higher taxes.
Well, they do.
They probably pay a bigger percentage of.
No, yeah, the average tax, uh, property taxes in Bonner County is fifteen thousand dollars a year.
Well, I would say they're positively affecting the economy. Well, I think, I think, no, if you're going to say something about, I'd say second homes in Bonner County um, are a good thing.
Well, and in reality, they.
Well, and in reality, they, in reality, they pay. In reality, they pay more in taxes because they don't get the homeowners exemption and they don't use the services as much.
Right, but it's all kinds of benefits.
But then by the same token. Uh, you know, people who come from other areas and bring. Lots of home equity affect affordability too, you can list that.
Absolutely, because they've gotta spend that money. That's where those second homes are coming from, because those qualify as getting under capital.
I know you got a lot of happy builders in this community.
Well, it's not as many as we were back in the eighties, nineties rather.
Well, but they're only building.
Yeah. Two hundred houses a year, most of the cost of building around here. If they hit three, they're, they're.
I think there's an effect on affordability.
That's striking. Also.
Probably picking it, because I'm not sure if there's anything we can do about it.
No, I mean, but again, it's, it's all these factors that are building to a conclusion. I, I don't know if each one of these is gonna end up in gold. Together, they're gonna say, here's the problem.
Strike.
Yeah.
Paramility of diverse housing, I think that's probably true. Compatibility of new development, existing.
Yeah, it is, it's a factor. It, it's not something, it didn't come out of this component. I don't know, it hasn't come out yet, that's more land use component. Maybe it's in our goals or policies or something, certainly not in the goal.
That's not new language. Compatibility of new developments, excuse me, my law. Housing in hazardous areas. Not really an issue?
Yeah, it is. In hazardous areas.
Tell you my interface.
Pardon?
Is that currently an issue? Housing issue, building in hazardous areas, could we allow that?
Oh, the fire, yeah, the fire though. But inland or when you guys, why would I invited you all to go to this seminar, we showed up.
Yeah.
I did. And the fire chief from West Side, he said, in my opinion. Everything from the city limits outward is wildland, urban interface. Everything. Not just certain area here, certain area here, in the west of Priest Lake, everything. Because if a fire starts, a major fire started and we couldn't put it out and big winds came up. The whole Bloomington County were burned down to the city limits, and maybe even the cities. That was his opinion as a firefighter for forty years.
Alright, so we'll leave it.
So yes. It's definitely a concern.
Okay.
Uh, this is a section up above that I'm gonna revise the language to talk about that.
We need to work on the language. I'm not sure what that last word is.
Yeah, safe.
Yeah, safe. Pick the last word, save out.
Semi-colonized safe. Every house should have a safe.
Alright, uh. So we're gonna, I, I suggest we bring this back for another.
What are you thinking?
For another, uh.
Workshop.
Alright.
Yes, when?
Two weeks.
Two weeks.
Yeah, everything else will just have to move to make room.
Don't we have to look at her?
Attendance.
Where we do have a conflict map amendment on the twenty-first. Um, as well as the public airport facilities and population that you guys just.
Oh, yeah. Obviously, it's gonna take time.
I don't know, so, uh, pull up the, pull up your. There we go. So we've got that, so we'll have housing again for commission discussion. Do we have any other components that are ready to discuss? How about public, public services?
We finally just got here, was just yesterday or Friday, like three or four alert, but if you look at that. How many is there? How many agencies? Fifty, seventy-five, it is a buffalo.
Big list.
Big list. No one's responding. We've got like four responses and said, yeah, we're gonna work on it. That's what Norman Light's response was. We got, um. Gosh. We've got a detailed letter. No, they said the last letter, I see in, in my shared drive, says that they're gonna work on it.
On which one?
Uh.
Is that from Sam Ross?
Sam put together a detailed. Listing of things and whatever.
Which, which.
Two years ago, uh, public, uh, facilities or services.
What I, what I could find in my records from last year was some conversations with them.
Conversation, yeah, okay, I, I may, that may not be in the drive, but one, the letter.
Alright, so we, we've got this, we've got a file, we've got a look at, we've got housing, which obviously could take more time. We've got a public hearing on the airport facilities, just that one?
Yeah.
And the, and the.
Oh, right, beyond the, so the order of the work, the order that. Three twenty-one meeting should be the public comment. Airport facilities first.
Well, it's a public hearing. Public comes first.
Public hearing comes first and then the workshop, public workshop, and then our. No, not that day. Well. Yeah, it's a, it's, no, it's not workshop, it's a hearing. Hearing, public hearing on public airports. No public workshop in our own workshop.
That's right. That's right, and the only question I had was whether or not we could put another component in there, but. I don't think we've got any.
That file's gonna be.
Yeah, that, that conflict map amendment, that's gonna take some time.
Are we gonna be downstairs?
Yes.
Yes.
Where does that go? Uh, in here, is that? Okay, so we don't. It's, it's. That'll be. As well.
That's what I was asking.
Yeah, so it'll be put into the file, um, like these are, but it'll be. It'll be separate, it won't be.
There's already, we're already getting.
Comments, so.
Oh, yeah.
I suspect that we're gonna have.
It's gonna be a.
Few people here. Alright, um.
At least they'll all leave after that hearing.
So we can do it, we can do this. Get kind of an update. Where you are, at least on, uh.
See, that, that whole component, it's, is pretty much. Facts, but, uh, Norman Light says so many customers. Uh, covers so many miles of power, stuff like that, uh. Uh, sewer district has so many hookups, so many available, so a lot of this pretty much is a. Plug and paste, copy and paste a lot of this stuff. Um. I'll see if I can bring something forward.
Well, at least it's where you, where you are, you know, what companies have responded, maybe we can.
Okay. You said south side.
Yeah, we just got one from Southside Water and Sewer saying that they are in the final stages of approval, but their water plan was approved in twenty seventeen. And files two large system. Anyway, yeah, the facility plan recognizes their growth and also the deficiencies. And their ability to serve these, to provide these services. So, uh, we got another, so that's Southside Water, um, just to name the ones that I can see right now, uh, PhD.
Uh huh.
We have, uh, Connie from inland power and light. Uh, we have Victor from, uh, the library district. Uh, Becky Meyer, Dr. Becky Meyer, she's the school district. And Rhonda Whitaker with the city of Kootenay, but she's required the city community doesn't offer utilities services.
Right, well, it's kinda interesting, like, um, the one I was kinda looking forward to was the, uh. Big primary school district. Uh, and so she kinda hand sent their five, their proposed five-year strategic plan. It is two pages long. I mean, it doesn't give numbers, it doesn't give anything.
And it's only, it's an education.
Yeah.
And they, they don't touch, so they have, they're developing a separate facilities plan, they got a study going on right now. An updated facilities plan. They're talking to Becky and talking with the previous superintendent.
Yeah.
They do very minimal forecasting and, and planning from that standpoint, they mainly deal with upgrading buildings because they're old. But, and that's already been talked about in school facilities.
Gotcha.
That's what that component's all about.
Okay.
So why is it doubled up here? That was my question, and. You know, can we legitimately just say this was covered under the school facilities component and leave it at that? Because it, it's exactly what it asked for in the outline of the, uh, public facilities component. Schools, school facilities. You know, didn't the legislature read their own stuff?
Yeah, I was absolutely just shocked, said, yeah, I'll do this component. Open wide. I, I thought, I'm just gonna go back to the zoning commission.
Uh, well, I think we could probably, uh, deal with schools that way, I mean, it's just a, it's just one of the.
It's unfortunately, it's, it's all about the only way that you can do it that way.
Well, it's got sewage, drainage, power plants, utility, transmission corridors.
And, and what does it ask for?
Analysis.
But of what? Of the provision for.
Analysis of plans for sewage, drainage, power plant sites. Utility transmission quarters, water supply, fire stations, firefighting equipment. Local welfare facilities, which I guess are hospitals. Libraries, solid waste disposal sites. Schools, public safety facilities and related services. And also the location of civic centers and public buildings.
Well, somehow because.
That's why I threw it to you.
So, I mean, this is my assignment.
Some of these services, we can find their plans on their website, so I will, once, once we are done with the. Data for housing section, I will start working on the. Public services.
So are the sewer districts, what are the sewer districts giving us? Are they giving us plans? Are they giving us what their capacity is? What are they doing?
We haven't received anything yet from any of the sewer districts except from the south side, which I haven't seen before.
Thinking, thinking back to cases where.
Yeah, I would, I would assume that they would, they would tell us if, if they're gonna, if they have any plans of expanding in the next few years. In any of the directions. That may give us some idea of what.
Because either, either they have to expand the boundaries of the district if people request to be in there, then they gotta make a decision, can we provide service for that additional property? If they can't, they usually turn them down.
Right.
If they can, then they have to have facilities plan where they show expansion. And I don't know of any districts other than Southside right now that has any. Any plans for expansion.
I think it's not so much about expansion, it's more about. It's more about expanding their capacity. If they can expand their capacity, then they can.
If, I mean, there's. Many of the districts. Everybody in that district is already served or can serve, be served. So the ones that are not presently served within the district bounty. That's where the additional capacity would come in because they're stretched now. So, Southside. EPA has sold them for decades. If everybody in your district flushed at the same time, you'd be blown off the map. They put it that bluntly. At any time, there's only three quarters of the people in the district are in their houses. Because they're all summertime.
Well, we're gonna find out because they're gonna, they're gonna respond hopefully sooner or later. Um, with regard to natural resources. Um. I think that's gonna be a, a very time consuming, um. And, uh, no, we can. Know that, uh, usually it's staff to get a lot of updates on that.
Yeah. It's not half of what it was originally.
Good.
It's about what?
Half.
Perfluous information.
Well, there's gonna be a lot of interest in that, in that component, I'm sure.
So, from housing, we want to go to public services or natural resources because I can only work on one.
There you go. You tell, tell us, tell us.
Um.
Which one you want first?
We can wait to get data for public services for a while, and meanwhile, I can work on getting the data for natural resources because that is mostly. Because on, in natural resources, a lot, we won't be dependent on other agencies too much. There will, there will be some dependency, but not too much. Most of it will be just googling and finding data.
We need to include that language from. Uh, fishing game, because. That seems to be.
Oh, the natural resources.
Very important.
Well, you know, that was.
You've been watching the county commissioners.
And, and I got a big deal that we don't, we don't pay enough attention to fishing game. I got additional emails from US Army Corps regarding jurisdiction. All that stuff, so I'll, I'll bring them when we discuss the natural resource.
And wetlands.
Wetlands.
Yeah, it's in there, in particular, wetlands is in there.
Yeah.
Yeah, fishing game, um, sent us a bunch of information on a whole list of wetlands. That they would like to have.
Oh, okay, yeah.
Um. No, I asked Swati, there was a national resources committee?
Yes, I read a report.
Have you read the report?
Yes, yeah, I read it, and it looks like it was tailored for the Board of County Commissioners. To manage and oversee.
It's a separate county policy.
Yeah, policy or. What would you call it?
Policy.
Policies and objectives in there.
It says national resources plan.
Since it needs to be updated every other year.
Ooh.
Oh, yeah. Which I don't think it's been updated since it was written. The committee is still, uh, the commission is still in. Anyway, they're still in existence, but they don't meet regularly, as I know.
Well, I learned. They never go away. My point is, is a couple of things. Number one, we, we all should read it, um. Because I, I know that that's gonna come up when we get to natural resources, the public is gonna ask us, that we've read that and considered it. So I think we should read it and consider it. Whatever it's worth. Um. And there may be, there may be things in there that are helpful, we'll have to see. I think we need to at least read it and, uh.
But it, it's a fairly extensive document and it's pretty much saying BOCC shall and will. BOCC, so I don't see how it was relevant to the planning. Uh. It's mainly, if you read the purpose and intent. Which is the second section of the document.
It does say one is.
There you go. It, all the way through, just go down, page down to the purpose and need or. Policy intent or whatever they call it. Second bunch of words. Deduction that it's purpose and need. Okay, there's all facts and stuff. Keep going a little bit. There you go. Just expand that a little bit and, and just, just read the first couple of paragraphs. To make clear the culture, heritage, custom and economic of citizens by in regard to natural resources found within the boundary of the county. Period that these cultural resources be taken into consideration by any and all state and federal agencies when they make their plans. Nothing to do with county planning. Not land use planning for the county, because those areas do not fall into the jurisdiction of Bonner County. That's why they wrote the thing. Because they wanna be heard by the state and federal agencies, what they do there, quote language.
As, as has been suggested, uh, everyone can read it. I don't think it need. I, I think we, I think what you're saying, it needs to be incorporated in, that we have awareness of it.
Yeah.
But I don't see much information in here that I would suggest needs to be added to the natural resource. And if the hearing and the process goes, oh, yeah, that should be in there, fine, put it in there. But go down to thirty-four point one, which is down towards the end of the document, way down. Section thirty-four.
Alright. Little more.
Thirty-four. I think it's thirty-four one, right?
You know, you. It's thirty-four, yeah. That's what it talks about, amending and updating. Yeah. By anyone.
So I'm not sure I understand, so, so this was, so this was written. To, uh, tell federal and state agencies what to do?
Yes.
Yeah, it was pretty much like, uh.
It's all mixed up with, doggone you, federal government, give us back our land. You know, that was the basis of it, this was their, their. Limited attempt to say that. That when you come up, when, when the Forest Service comes up with their land use plan, which is what they call it. That they must listen to Bonner County, they must. And you know what the Forest Service did?
Yeah, that's, that's that time when they were trying to create a collaboration with the Neethos and all that stuff. Regarding.
Like to see actually, because this is really about. Uh, the BOCC at that time, making their positions known, or the. Betterment of Bonner County.
Yeah.
From their perspective with these issues and dealing with state and federal agencies. It's really a BOCC document that needs to be reviewed by them. And not, and I see it as a separate entity. And not, and I see it as a separate entity, but I'd hate to see it come into the comp plan.
I will forward you the letter that I wrote as the chair of this commission. To the Board of County Commissioners, when this committee came to the blank and said. Here it is, please incorporate this as the, as a natural resource component of the comp plan. We talked about it at the time. I wrote the letter for the commission and it says, no way, this is not. It's how it's land use planning.
Yep.
So I'll forward that letter out.
Well, no, no, don't be the favor, just, yeah, don't, don't, yeah. So, so. The problem with this natural resources component is that. Because there is such a large. Uh, element of federal and state land. And a lot of the more wild natural resources are on federal and state land. So I don't know, you know, I mean, a lot of what's in the natural resources section is gonna be. Really dealing with federal and state land.
It can't because we don't have any authority or jurisdiction. What in the county code is gonna say?
I don't know.
Well, I think I can say it a little differently. The fact that we have over fifty percent of the land is federal and state land and we don't have control over that through our land use regulations. Limits what we can do in the natural resources section of the comp plan. We can only really, we can only really address.
Right, right, so that's it.
Are gonna naturally be drawn, as Alan is saying, to think about those natural resources.
They wanna ensure that, you know, we've already heard it. Yeah, just in our, in our.
Mm hmm.
Uh, you want to raise on the, on the national doors, it's the county. Uh, people want to do exploration, you know.
Create. We can't put it out. Habitat, you know.
Nope.
Critical. Wildlife habitat.
Well, I mean, that's. It's not on our radar yet and. The update on.
There it is right there.
Bringing control back home. There's a certain element of this kind of. Acre of that federal and state, let's not come back, at least the federal land, to come back to the state. The state can manage it better, yeah? How we doing with our statement?
Is this been made? Public or?
Sort of.
It's public, yeah.
Has anyone said this needs to be incorporated into the hazardous area comp plan?
We have, yeah, we.
The committee that put it together did, and we rejected that.
We.
Formally.
Also, within these.
My, my point, bringing it up. Is just that we should be aware of it. I think we should read it. Obviously Mike's read it. I haven't read it, but I've gotta read it.
Yeah.
It's a, it's, it's a. Yeah, well, that's fine.
That, that.
And it says B O C C all the time. It does not say the, the uh planning commission. Was it something that was commissioned by the Board of County Commissioners at the time?
Two decades ago, because of the concerns with the national lands. The planning, the Board of County Commissioners at that time put in place a committee or a commission to look into it and come up with that. And and over the years, they've done various things. They've, they've participated with the Corps, Army Corps, they've participated with the Forest Service. When those things come up on behalf of the county. But this was their manifesto that they came up with two or three years ago. And uh. Demanded that we put it in the comprehensive plan as the component for natural resources.
Hmm. Yeah, have fun.
So, so uh, we will uh. Oh, that's, they still have their committee formed right now?
I think so.
Yeah.
Members are still.
Yeah.
Around. I mean, look at who cares.
Right there.
Okay.
Twenty three.
Alden Howell, I'm not sure. Maybe we can delay this.
Yeah, those guys are still, they're all still here. Jim McReynolds is still around, but.
Yeah, they're all, and there, there's their terms. They've, some of them expired already and maybe they've been replaced because this is the document, so.
What's at the.
Expired. This one worth?
And again, it's approved by the B O C C's uh.
It's a board, the natural.
It should be going to B O. Alright, so. To uh. During the meeting. Uh, and to uh March twenty first.
Yeah.
At four thirty. And highway. Fifteen hundred highway two, standpoint, and are we, we gonna be in the third floor? Are we gonna be? There's gotta a first floor.
Proud of coming in.
Just, just for all of you to know, um. So we are, we uh, we are having a planning commission hearing for agriculture and economic development on fourth of April. And then B O C C workshop, there, there is going to be a B O C C workshop for four of the components on sixth of April.
April sixth?
Yes.
What, and after that?
Uh, yes, one thirty P M.
What are the components?
Population. Public airport facilities.
Public airports?
Yes.
Before the April.
What else?
Uh, agriculture and economic development.
You'll send us an email or.
I'll send an email. I'll send it. And then.
What about?
And then there is a B O C C hearing on twelve of April. For population. And public airport facilities.
Oh, so the sixth is a workshop.
Yeah.
Um, do, do they feel a need to have a workshop in every component?
That's what they told us to do. In the last workshop, we had our school facilities and transportation and transportation. Nobody had any questions. I didn't from the board out, there, there was no one.
Don got off.
Except Don got up. He wanted to explain.
Yeah.
What he done.
So, so.
Sorry. Um.
So I don't know. I mean, I think these workshops are probably not gonna. Be that meaningful, but.
So Tuesday, we have a, a big meeting with the B O C C. We have it once a month. Last month, we were getting to the process to present to them. And one of the commissioners decided they couldn't stay. They had another commitment. It was a long meeting. And so we never actually got around to. Getting the process that we have come up with to, to present to them to have their buy-in. So um. How we, how we're having the, the workshop uh without public comment, the workshop with public comment, and then we go to the. Correct.
Well, I got, I got the email, uh, I think Don did too. Uh, resolution. That Asia was uh. Asia and Luke were gonna have a, a workshop on April sixteen, seventeen.
That's what I was gonna ask about. Correct, so.
So is that gonna be? They're gonna have a hearing before that?
So the, on Tuesday, that's another update item that we need to discuss because. Right now, the planning department and as far as I know, the planning commission has not been invited to this yet.
Well.
Yeah, I don't really think about it.
So that's right.
Except on the seventeen, Monday, the seventeen.
Um, is there a res.
April seventeenth.
Yeah, workshop.
One day, it's a workshop that is all about the comp plan and public involvement.
Right.
Right.
So I, I, Tuesday, a week from today, hopefully have more guidance. Uh, for what that is and what their. Uh, the outline, because originally it was set up by.
I, yeah, A, A, I, I spent a lot talking with Asia three weeks ago. And she was rumbling about this meeting that she wanted to put together this workshop. So after that, I think she sent me an email or a phone message or something. Saying, yeah, you, now, I don't know what she meant, me or you, she should be there. Because we wanna talk about this, she did it button down. Then last week, I was talking with Luke and he said, oh yes, I asked, I asked Asia if she would invite me to that meeting. Because if two are there, you know. It takes that formal.
Yeah.
Attitude of it. So, so she did, she extended the invitation to Luke on it.
So if I understand, this is a workshop, public workshop. On the seventeenth, right?
But is it with or without testimony or input from the public?
And workshops and workshop, there is no testimony at a workshop. It's, it's, it's.
Yeah.
Pre-raw.
Yeah, right.
We're not lecturing about that.
Yeah.
They have to. Hopefully we'll get some guidance on how they want it to run an outline of some sort.
Okay, so the update though, uh, next Tuesday is.
Uh, it's where uh, for the planning department to update the commissioners on uh, everything from the staff. Let's to the revenue generated, the finances, all the way to. Um, what the planning and zoning commissions are doing, uh, what's coming up. Um. So that's, that, that's for, for, for Jake and. Department. For you guys, uh, because you guys don't have enough underplay already. Um, I don't know if you guys were at today's meeting, but the commissioners. Uh, uh, the. Long story short, um, they passed. Uh, they approved to. Make a text amendment to the R V code. Mainly, there's a land use table that says R V parks are allowed. Conditionally allowed within almost every zoning except for industrial and one other one. They wanna take it, they wanna take that conditional use of R V parks out of uh, the rural zoning, the ag forest. Zoning, the commercial zoning, and they want it, sorry. Yeah, no, keep it in the commercial, but mainly the rules. The RV park down in Blanchard, that's, that's really what, where this is all spurring from and whatnot, so um. So Tuesday, we're gonna talk about the, what they want, what actual amendment to the text regarding the RVs that they want. Um.
They're sending that back to us.
So it's gonna be a county initiated text amendment because it's gonna be a legislative file, it's gonna come.
But it's a code amendment.
Code amendment.
So we can, we do have.
Yeah. Some. The ability of anything that'll make the direction.
So um. You're gonna get direction on next Tuesday as to what they want.
Yep.
And they're gonna draft the, the text.
Yeah, so, so, so planning staff will draft it up and, uh, with their wishes, so. And then we'll come before you, county initiated text change.
So.
I've got a rough idea of the timeline. Are we gonna see that in six weeks or a couple of months or something?
Is it just.
Quite a bit of notice, right?
I would venture to say.
Well.
Housing component.
Has the B O C C asked for planning commission members' participation?
Uh, not that direct, no.
Well.
In a roundabout way.
Roundabout way.
They've talked about.
Conversations of, hey, we're starting to see these uh, comp plan amendments come before us for adoption.
Yet, where's the planning? And that's where we started, Jake, at the last. Uh. Meeting, we asked, hey, can one of you guys please be there because there's sometimes questions? So that's why Alan was there, Don was there last time.
I think it should be. One of us and it should either be Alan or Don, depending on who's available or. Look, Flotter.
Yeah.
Mainly because. Well, first of all, I, I would say as a former commissioner, we shouldn't be there. Uh, because the document is what it is and it's been through a process. And you are the ones presenting it to them as a staff. Because then we can get into personal interpretations. Uh, which. And not that I would think that would happen, but it's just not a good practice.
It could inadvertently happen.
Yes.
Happened with, you know, some people thought, well, that should be in hazardous areas.
Right.
So we've done our job as, as charge.
Yes.
And we should be required not to do anything. Beyond that. Uh, because again, then we start getting into their space.
Correct.
And they are the decision makers and, and if we're saying something intentionally or inadvertently, which is more likely. That takes. Takes it out of the, the, the intent of the document.
I agree that, I think, I think a big problem with this current commission is the fact that they're so green. That, that um. And that, and another.
Yeah, I mean, it's, it's. Uh, we refuse. The con, the context. You have to listen to some of the meetings. But you'll see that there needs to be um. Some direction and, and some uh. Questions that are answered. You know, they have, especially with the, with those first two, uh, hazardous areas and special. They, they were just all over the place. Um, they just really didn't understand the context of those components and that kind of stuff. And. So basically what Don and I were doing was just answering questions.
Just answering questions.
Okay.
I mean, part of that, part of the, part of the rationale behind that. What set the stage was, when they took up the component with the goals and objectives. The document they got had, here's the suggested language, here's all the reasons why listed below that, which was wonderful to have. But they said, oh wow, this explains why they did what they did. Can't we get that with every one of these? Yeah, it was started with the housing.
Yeah, Luke.
Kinda set our own trap, I guess, um. But.
Are we recording this or? Uh oh. Um.
Yes, you are, and you're publicly being heard.
As a former county commissioner. I stand by the premise that our charge as a planning commission has been met.
Right, we have.
And, and we should. I don't be unencumbered or unencumbered the process going forward that is. The charge of the, of the Board of County Commissioners. And the staff should be the liaison and the bridge between. The planning commission process and what is now before the commissioners in answering those questions.
In an ideal world, I think you're right. And I think that's, that's certainly all the way.
Yeah, yeah. Commissioners trust your staff.
Well, yeah, you, you got a recommendation. Take their recommendation. That's all it says is. They can't make a move on a complan amendment unless they have, until they have a recommendation from us. Yeah, right, and they've got it. Oh, there it is. You know, we got a process to do that.
Well. Let's, let's talk about this. So is it the, is it the? The will of the commission, of the planning commission? That we not attend any of these meetings, even though we're requested to do so?
I, I would say if we were to attend it. Uh, I would say first of all, no, but I know there's gonna be other opinions. But if we are asked to attend, then it should be either our chair or vice chair, whoever's available. And I, I talked to Alan about.
And not three or four of us.
Either, exactly. And, and, and one reason I, I started to deviate from that, here we're talking about components that each of us has compiled. So. Yes, we've talked about it at lengthly, we did tonight with the housing component, we've all got an aura of that vote. But. Some of the components, it's down to the person who wrote it, and they're the ones that would best describe or explain or. Why did it say two instead of three? Okay, just an explanation. Not pontificating on what is said or, you know, personal information, but. So I, I don't know, I back it back in both of that. We're supposed to be knowledgeable, uh, any of us, especially as opposed to the chair and vice chair. To be able to explain any of, anybody.
Yeah, I mean, there's somebody, there's just sorts of basic. Basic things that, 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 that are not being understood.
Yeah.
Like the, the, the comp plan is relying within our jurisdiction. With regard to land use. Can staff not answer those questions?
Well, the staff did. Yeah, they did, and then they still.
Yeah, we, we do try our best to answer all the questions they have, but sometimes it really helps having the planning commission back us up.
Yeah.
And it really, the purpose of this work, of these workshops is not to influence B O C C's decision. It's to, it's to inform them what has been done till now.
Correct.
It's a recommendation.
Right, it's just to, it's just to.
Yeah, right.
It's just to. Enforce the planning com, commission's recommendation in that, in that workshop. That's all. Uh.
All it's supposed to.
Yeah.
I, I'm, I'm listening to Mike, and this wasn't something I had thought about in the past, but I, I think I'm, I have a growing sensitivity to how. Having more involvement with us in those discussions could almost. It becomes now a different. Now a different workshop almost.
Yeah.
It's almost like a repeat of what we've done. We spent a lot of time drafting these components and. They're gonna go with a little bit of a different group of people and spend more time drafting them.
And, and.
Us forever. And they need some, they need to build that trust with the commissioner and his staff, and that's, that's why these, we are having these workshops.
Yeah, I, I, I agree right there with what Swati said. I think given some of the questions that were asked. Especially by the newer commissioners who aren't quite as familiar with what's the actual process of what's going on. I think it was actually very advantageous that Alan and Don were there to answer the questions. And, and it did give them the sense that, oh, we are being very methodical about this. I agree that we shouldn't all be there, but I think Alan and Don being there at the last one was really, really ended up being a positive.
I was asked a question in one of the B O C C workshops, if the commission was looking at newer data or if they were updating the data according to whatever latest was available. And I did answer the question that they, like all of us, we have been looking at data, the latest data available, and that was one of the. Reasons why we, we are updating all this. But it really helps when planning commissioners themselves are there to back what I'm saying.
It's an information.
Totally understand what you're saying, Mike. I mean, I, that's my, that's my experience too. You know, I sat on the city council for eighteen years. And when our commissioners made recommendations to us, it came through staff. That, you know, we didn't, we didn't have a lot of the.
Even then. These, these components that have gone. It's the standard procedure. Staff gets up and makes a staff report. And usually the staff report is you have the recommendation in front of you. It was nothing more than that. Doesn't get detailed out of everything. Well, phrase three, paragraph two point nine. No, you've got the recommendation. Read it for yourself.
And it may, it may well be that as um. The current commission uh gets a little bit more experience, not sure, we won't need to be.
Yes.
It projects a bias for the commissioners. I mean, I could read it this way. If I was Joe Blow's citizen. And I wanted to come in and make comments, but they're asking, planning commission, what'd you guys? You know, and that was the same person there. I mean, it just, it, maybe I'm overplaying this. If you guys are willing to help them and assist them so they can get their feet under them, great. Uh, it's just something I'm not used to.
Sometime back, uh, the commission, because they were upset with the planning commission. When they brought, when one of our recommendations came up through, they had a general hearing. They, they, they pledged that they did not have to consider our, that was opposite state code, so that went away.
They could say no.
Well, no, but they, they can read our recommendation and say, well, we don't agree, and then they can hold their own investigation, right? That's their. But they're, the way they did it then, they said, no, we're not even gonna do that. And that was thrown out.
I.
It was a very short time. It was on the books and it was thrown out. So they still have the ability to amend our recommendation. My question is, when you read the state code that talks about that, it says, and a new hearing. Why wouldn't the commission send it back to the planning commission? They have the new hearing on new information.
Why, why would they?
Because of the process. Because we have more.
And you know that is. And they wanted to send back. If they have an issue with some of the stuff that we've written and recommended. And everyone wanted to send back to us.
I think that's the reason why they, they now have workshops. So they can digest it better upfront and that deal with our recommendation.
They're dealing with questions that come up that, that the public is asking them. And they don't have the answers. So they, they looked at us and said, okay, well, what about that?
I don't know. I'll get back to you.
Well, it's always that.
It's always that. This whole thing, I, I think started about a week and a half ago-ish. I received a phone call and I was asked if I'd be willing to come to another workshop. And kind of explained some different things. And I explained, I think it'd be better to have the chairman and the vice chair. I'll be there too. I have some different knowledge on some different aspects. And, and I was requested, well, what kind of information can I suggest to these groups? That this meeting is somewhat catered to. Uh, should maybe go ahead and read, look up. I said, well, you know, Lupa for one. Uh, I'd already taken as that guidelines, Idaho land use handbook. I mean, there is a lot of good reading out there that you can find a lot of these answers to, because there are some people out there who believe. That zoning should be put to a popular vote. Seriously. That every land use and comprehensive plan should be put to a vote. I have that in writing. It's a, it's a growing common thing. Just because, I mean, people say it, this is a public, public exercise. Well, it is, yes, because you've got elected officials who have appointed a board to look into this and, and take, do their work. On behalf of the landlords in the county.
I, I guess, to put this to a close, I would, I would like. Our chair and vice chair to be available for the commissioners until such time they feel comfortable enough with the process. That they're engaged in, but to make only limited references to the factual document before them.
Yeah.
And nothing extemporaneous or anything like that.
It's just.
Yeah, I'm sure that's what's being done.
You're mainly there for, for the planning staff, you know, if we need to call you up, but not as.
So planning staff's gonna be at that April seventeenth.
Oh, uh, well, we haven't been invited, but we'll get clarification. It's a workshop, uh. They're now, it's being held by Asia, so Asia hopefully will be the presenter right now.
She got a recognition.
You got tied into executive sessions.
So you, so you have a finisher presenting?
Right, because it's their workshop.
It's a workshop, yeah.
Yeah.
But it's their workshop.
Public meetings, though, I mean, we're all.
Just shooting that breeze. Okay. We're done. I guess we're on here.
And the last one, um, uh, is uh, uh, interviews. So again, the vacant seat, uh, we had interviews last Tuesday, sorry, yeah, a week ago. Last Tuesday, we heard uh three inner uh applicants. Um, and one of them wasn't able to make it, so the commissioner wanted to have another interview session to uh hear the. Applicant couldn't make it, so we'll hear that applicant on Tuesday, a week from today. And hopefully have a decision soon after that.
That's the same as a zoning commission.
Is that, is that three applicants or four applicants for both positions or just the?
We have four applicants. I think, I think all four of them are happy with either, either commission. I think one may just only be a. This closes. I just wanted to update the.
Okay. Thank you very much.
Uh, and then we're adjourned until uh March twenty first, at the time and place I mentioned before.